Yeah, she wasn't in. No. In compliance with Chapter 551 openings of the Texas Government Code as amended, I call to order meeting in the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Monday, January 14, 2013 at 6:30 PM. The Board may meet in closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, red assignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee, deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease or value real property, deliberation of a negotiated contract for a prospective gift to the district, deliberation about commercial or financial information that the Board has received from a business prospect, or deliberation of the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect and/or to consult with legal counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or a settlement offer, or on a matter which the school district's legal counsel determines should be confidential in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, and 551.071 respectively. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Approval of the agenda, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes seven zero zero. At this time, Dr. Mathias, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Okay. We are scheduled tonight to have a public hearing. However, there, at this time, we have no one signed up to speak, and so, and so, we will then move to the next item on the agenda.
Great.
And, Dr. Starfen, did you want to tell us a little bit about the items on the dais and?
Yes, and on the walls.
And on the walls.
Mr. President and trustees, before we start all the substantive topics of tonight's meeting, I just wanted to acknowledge the students and teachers, staff, and leadership across the district who've created banners, provided you goodies, and coffee mugs, and plants down on the floor, and lots of other things that you'll see throughout the month. And it is because we actually do celebrate School Board Appreciation Month in the state of Texas, and so, there are ways that you will see throughout this month that our, how our staff will express in so many interesting, creative ways how much they appreciate you. But I just wanted to acknowledge for all those folks who started getting their things in, and especially Clifton, they grew these gorgeous plants, I don't know if people can see some of them.
Oh, you can't see some of them.
But there's Jade, and ferns, and all kinds of lovely things. They have a lovely greenhouse over at the school, and so, they've been nurturing and caring for these over the last few months, and you can tell that they actually do really beautiful work. So, I hope you'll enjoy them, and all the other clever things that, that staff will be doing. The theme for this year is something raising, raising schools to a new height, or something like that, I can't remember exactly, but anyway, but each year, the governor picks a, a new theme, and we celebrate it. So, you'll see lots of probably balloons and floating things to symbolize how much you're lifting and helping us. So, thank you for the opportunity to recognize y'all, and happy Board Appreciation Month.
Well, and thank, so all the staff and everyone else who's helped in contributing to this tonight, so thank you very much, greatly appreciated.
Great, so we'll move on to something I'm sure you'll appreciate, which is the demographic report. This evening is another way we show our love for you, we keep growing. But, Mr. President and trustees, I'm going to invite our guest to come on down to help present, but you're going to hear an analysis and a report of data, including but not limited to our regional setting, geographical information, systems updates, district enrollment projections, housing trends, small area enrollment projections, and a build-out analysis. We have our longstanding demographer, Dr. Dennis Harner, who's here and is our primary author for the demographic report. He'll present his summary of projected population changes throughout the district over the next 10 years. We also have AISD staff who will describe the impact of these changes on the capacity of our elementary and secondary schools. But we also have tonight, which is a pleasure and a wonderful addition to our panel, yes, we're talking about you, Mr. Robinson, our city of Austin demographer, Ryan Robinson, is also here to...
Ellen Ru.
Oh.
Ryan is on his way down.
Oh, he is coming, okay, sorry.
You're looking at me.
Okay, well, welcome to, sorry, my bad. But, and our Chief Operations Officer Lawrence Friar is here to kind of put it all together, so welcome to all of you, and Mr. Robinson, when he gets here, for all the hard work that goes into pulling this together every year, and so, I'll turn it over to you to finish the report.
Welcome to the school board members that I haven't met. I'm Dennis Harner, and I'll, I hope I meet all of you at some point in time, but good luck with your tenure as trustees.
There he is.
There's Mr. Robinson right there.
I knew he had glasses.
Okay. I'm going to go through kind of the highlights of what we've done in our work. As Dr. Starfen said, the report is divided into eight sections. I hope you have the, the regional setting, which is really based upon TEA/AEIS data that we compiled to let you look and see how you compare to your neighbors. There is data in there concerning socioeconomic characteristics and recent enrollment trends, but it kind of helps you get a feel for who your neighbors are and what they look like. Population trends are from the 2000 and 2010, there we go, 2000, 2010 census of population. We're looking primarily there at population trends and housing trends within geographical areas within the school district. The A, the communities, American Community Survey is the replacement for the old census long form, for any of you that had census exposure in the past. The Bureau of Census did away with our long form and replaced it with this annual survey, which is useful in some regards, but problematic in other regards, but that's all we have, so that's what we present to you. It has a lot of information, it's the only source of information, though, on things like economy and housing and employment, and things like that, that's the only source we have. The GIS, the Geographical Information System, is in here, that's basically where we do all the number crunching, we get the student data, we compile it, and put it into forms that we can use for our work. District enrollment projections are just what they sound like, they're our enrollment projections, that's at the district level, those are our control totals that we use to, in developing our small area projections, and we'll talk more about that, too. Housing trends, we rely heavily upon the Travis County Appraisal District, the City of Austin, and Metro Study. So, we've got several sources of data, one is real strong on single family, and the other is real strong on multifamily, and we try to bring it all together with those in that area. Small area projections, now, for those who haven't worked with this kind of data before, what we have are attended zones, and then attended zones are all divided into what are called planning areas. So, we have 593 of these planning areas, and all of the projections are done at the small area level, these planning areas, and then aggregated into attended zones and into the district. And then finally, the build-out analysis, I think we've done that before, and it's basically, how many kids are we going to have when this whole place is built out? So, moving on, how did we do last year? Well, what I've got here for you, at the top, or over on the far left, it says fall actual, so it goes 2007 to 2011, those are the white lines, and then 2012, 13 is the blue line, that is the actual for last year, I mean, for this year. The yellow line, 2012, 13 projected, is what I projected last year. Okay, so if you look out on the far right, you'll see that I projected the district would have 87,007 13, and it came in at 86,732. So, if you subtract the, the yellow from the blue, you see that my projection was under by 981 kids. That is higher than we like to see, but it's still only 1%. Last year, I think we were like off by 200, and we've been pretty close for the last many years, but, so this is one of the worst deviations we've had, and I'd like to talk about why it happened. It happened because we had significant outmigration last year. In demographic studies, you have inmigration, you know, people moving into a district, you have people moving out, that's outmigration, and the difference is net migration. So, for instance, if we had 1,000 move in and 500 move out, we had a net positive migration of 500 kids. So, what we've got here is a set of bar charts, and if you look along the x-axis, you'll see that we have grade-to-grade net change, and it goes K to K, K to 1, K, 1 to 2, 2 to 3, 3 to 4, so on and so forth. So, we're going to look at the movement of kids by grade from one year to the next, okay? And so, each of these little bars represents a, a pair of years. So, the white bar is from '07 to '08, the gray bar is '08 to '09, the darker gray is 10, and so on and so forth, and then the red is from 11 to 12, 2011 to 2012. That's the one I'm focused on, because if you'll look at all grades from the K, K to 1 pair, all the way out to the 7th to 8th pair, you'll notice that the red bar is the largest one, and every year, it's negative, or for every pair, it's been negative this year, and it's been unusually negative. For instance, if you look at the 4th to 5th progression, this year, we lost 622 kids on a net basis, 4th to 5th, 622. If you look at the, all the little gray ones to the left of the red one, you'll see that its average is about 300. So, we had a, we've had anomaly here in terms of this migration trend, and that's what led to the change, or the deficiency, or you will, or shortfall in terms of the projections and the actual. Good news is, if you look out there at the high school level, you'll see that the retention in between 8th and 9th grade has declined significantly, and if you look at the change between 9th and 10th, you'll see that the number of kids who left the district has declined dramatically in the last five years. Between '07 and '08, it was like 1,300 kids, last year, it was 700. That's a dramatic decline in the loss of kids between 9th and 10th grade. It's always been a problem in this district, and it's, it's obviously being corrected. Okay, how did we do last year? Okay, moving on. As part of our district-level trends or projections, we do look at births and relate them to the kindergarten in the district. So, on the x-axis, you see year of birth, 1994 to the year 2011, okay, so that's the top line on the, on the, on the figure, birth, you can see it goes from 90, 9100 all the way out to nearly 12,000, and then the line below that is kindergarten enrollment five years later. Okay, let me repeat that, kindergarten enrollment five years later. So, if the kid was born in 2007, okay, and he, so then in 2012, there were 7,985 kindergarteners, okay, so this is how we relate the births and kindergarteners, so we can project the future kindergarten. So, we just develop a little ratio and project it on out. The good news also is, or some good news, for me at least, is that the births in 2012 were up again, okay? You can see there that the births kind of started declining in, in 2008, a little bit, 2010, 11. 2012, they were up. That, that just came in from the vital statistics. That's the Texas Department of Health. Okay, we then go on to develop three projections, a low, mid, and a high, and obviously, the right in front of you there, the, the mid would, would go from about 86,7 up to 95,8, thereabouts, so that's about 9,000 over a 10-year period. Once again, that's the mid-range, we think that the, the mid-range is obviously going to be the best way to go, but there's a high and a low in case something crazy happens. We also do the projections by school type, this is mid-range projections by school type, the top line shows the elementary between 2012 and 2022, it'll increase by about 4,400 kids in a 10-year period. So, most of the growth we're going to see is in the elementary grades. Then if we move down to the middle school, which is the bottom line, middle school would grow from 17,000 to 19,000, that's about 2,000 kids, and then the high schools will grow by about 2,500 kids up to 23,5. So, that's the mid-range put into school types. Now, as part of our calibration process, we have to look at leading indicators of where the growth is going to be in the future. So, I've relied upon Eldon and Ryan for some housing data. This particular table here shows the single-family detached annual starts over the last, since the first quarter of '08. Single-family detached starts, okay, and in the first quarter of '08, there were 15, 1,534, so that's, those were the numbers that were started in the three, the four quarters, the three-quarters of '07, and the one-quarter of '08. And we go down the line, and you can see the, the change in the single-family starts over the, that period of time, and by the third quarter of 2012, we were down to 783. I think personally, and we'll ask Eldon later to talk about this, that we bottomed out in Q2 of 2012. It got down to 627 single-family starts in that quarter. Now, last quarter was, the third quarter of 2012, 783, we'll be getting data from Eldon soon to see if in fact that bounce back is, is continuing. Have we seen this before? Yes, emphatically. It's a cyclical business, and housing business is very cyclical. I take this all the way back to 1982, this is data from the appraisal district, this is year-built for A1 category, single-family houses. You can see the top year was '83, 3,500 houses. That was when the, the end of the Reagan recession in '82 started a big housing boom in '83. But boy, it went away fast, and we got into the savings and loan debacle in the mid-'80s, went back down into the 700s, '99, that was a boom period, went all the way back up to 2,700, had the early recession, particularly the tech recession here in the, in the early 2000s, housing dropped off again. By '05, it was back up to 2,300, and recently, it was down to under 900. So, the housing market is kind of, kind of, that's the way it moves, and it's no straight line, but we do gather that data from these sources and use it to help us do our small area projections that I talked about. Now, this picture is not very clear on this screen, can you see this? This is what I call the hotspots, and what we're trying to do is give you a feel for what the things are going to be in the future that might plague you, so to speak. And I'm not going to go through them all, because there's a description of all of them on the next page, gives you kind of some numbers and some verbiage about each one, but the two that catch my eye the most, okay, Colony Park is back on the map. We've been looking at Colony Park now for probably 10 years, and there, I know they're now having public hearings or public meetings to develop a plan for Colony Park, and I feel better now because we were actually putting kids in there in our projections years ago, and then it just blew away. I, I don't know what happened to it. I think it's got geotechnical problems, if you want to know, I, I think it's got, you know, moving land and so on and so forth. The other one that's coming on, by the way, Colony Park is in far northeast Austin, for those that don't know where it is. And then the other place that, the other tract that's coming online, it's in the city process right now, it's called Goodnight Ranch, it's out on Slaughter Lane, east of 35, and you can see it's kind of down there in southeast Austin, that's got 3,500 lots approximately, I don't, I haven't seen the final plan for it, but those are the two really biggies, and if you look around here, you'll see some other things that are likely to affect you in the near future, and a lot of them, by the way, are in southeast Austin. Okay, moving on to the attended zone projections, by the way, the, the word there, attended zone's real important. We do not do campus-level projections, we do attended-zone projections, because you have so many programs and transfer policies, and the federal government is involved, there are all sorts of things that make kids, not make, but allow kids to go from one attended zone to another school. So, ours are for attended zones, where the kids live. But by our projections through the year 2017, that's only five years, all but four of the elementary should grow, some of them not very much, but we see growth just about everywhere. Middle schools, 13 out of the 18 should grow, and at the high school level, only one should decline by any measure at all. And then finally, moving on to the build-out analysis, by our projections, there should be an additional 13,000 elementary students, 5,000 middle school, and 6,000 high school kids. That's a total of 24,000 kids. How do we do a build-out study? Well, we look at land use, we look at land use constraints, development constraints, we look at the various environmental controls out there, so on and so forth, and come up with density factors for planning areas, and then we make projections based upon a, a density that we see is appropriate for a particular planning area. So, it's a, it's a judgmental thing, and there is no timeline on it, it's probably, if you have 24,000 kids and you absorb them all, 1,000 a year, that's 24 years, if you absorb them at 500 a year, that's 48 years. So, we're talking a long way out in the future, we don't know when it's going to be, but a lot of school districts want this, so they can kind of have a feel for what the ultimate number is going to be, and what the configuration of schools might be at any one particular school level. So, that's the kind of the mountaintops of what we did, and I will pass the baton.
Switch over to seats. Now, we're going to switch our seats, and
Okay.
Ms. Wilson will provide the impact to AISD.
Board, while they're doing this set change for the November elected trustees, let me, let me put this in context as to why we are having this presentation and how it fits into our planning. There really, this year, there are three reasons for it. Normally, the first reason every year is to look at how the district takes the demographic projections of Dr. Harner, feeds him into the planning of the schools that Ms. Wilson's going to talk to you about, and then develops what's the impact on, how do we plan for teachers, students going to each of the schools, and help develop our staffing formulas for, for the next school year. The second thing is long-term trends, as Dr. Harner said, that one of the things we need to do as trustees is be looking to the future. How, how is the district growing? What are the long-term trends? Where are we bringing students in? Why are we realizing, or why are we not realizing, student growth in certain areas? And how do we, as trustees, take that into account in terms of our planning? And then the third one, this year, that's specifically related to every-so-easily, and that's bond planning. Okay, so now we know we've got growth occurring in certain areas, what are we going to do to it in terms of bricks and mortar and/or drawing, redrawing of boundaries, and that sort of thing? So, those are, those are the three reasons that we have this presentation coming before us tonight. You'll have an opportunity as soon as I quit talking and let them finish their presentation to ask questions, but I just wanted to give you the context of why we have this presentation, what you want to be, that, looking for as a takeaways, and how you can be expecting to use this information after tonight. Just welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that explanation. So, for the benefit of our audience and some of our new trustees, I, I just want to take just a quick minute here to tell you about the type of data that we're talking about this evening. Our projections that we receive from Mr. Harner reflect the population of a school's attendance zone, okay? So, it does not reflect the school's enrollment, and these numbers do not take into account the student transfers that occurs, or student choice options that are given to our students. So, this is basically the starting point that we look at when we start analyzing our schools and the capacity, so it's a starting point for us just to look at the population. Also, the other thing that we're looking at is we're comparing that population data with the capacity the school has to contain, number of students a school can house within the permanent portion of the building. So, we don't take into consideration for these data points, we don't take into consideration portable buildings. So, it's, again, it's just the population, so who is assigned to that school, and the permanent capacity of that school. So, some of the, so some of the data points look a little funny to you, and you're saying, no, no, I know, that's not right. Again, remind that, that those are the two metricses that we're looking at. So, for AISD, we like to have our schools between 75% and 100, 115% of our permanent capacities. Schools that fall below this 75% could be used to relieve overcrowding of adjacent schools, if adjacent schools are overcrowding, and we can do a boundary change. Often, we use schools that are under enrollment for that, or sometimes, we will put in special programming into that school to draw students back into these under-enrolled schools. We start to look at the possibility of needing new construction through either additions or new schools, once a school is sustaining 125% or more of its permanent capacity. Of course, there are other factors that we look into, we'll look into the transfer history of that school, we'll look at a bunch of different things, but that's a starting point for us to think, maybe we need to start considering additional capacity. We also make sure that it's a trend and not a one-year anomaly. Okay? So, looking at our elementary schools, 78 of our 83 elementary schools that have attendance zones are projected to increase by 17, 18. Three of these schools are projected to increase by more than 100 students, so that's a significant growth, those being Andrews, Berenoff, and Blanton. 19 schools, elementary schools, are projected to increase by more than 50 students in the next five years. And if you look at these, they are primarily within the north-central and northeast, but you do see schools with growth all over the district. Only five of our elementary schools are projected to be flat or have a decline, but none of those schools are, are projected to decline more than 50 students, so again, no real significant decline in any of our schools. So, based on the 17, 18 population projections, 37 of our elementary schools will fall within our target range of 75 to 115%. 14 of those schools will be below the target range. 11 will be between 115 and 125%, that's sort of the monitor list. We'll have 11 schools between 125 and 150% and 10 schools that are over 150% of the permanent capacity. We'll be going through each geographical region of the district, and again, keep in mind- And again, keep in mind that these numbers are reflective of the population numbers, not school enrollment. So in the northwest, only one school is projected to be above 125% capacity. That's Dos Elementary at 159%. And one school would be on the monitor list, if you will, Hill Elementary at 123%. In north-central, I'm happy to say that we're making some progress in the overcrowding here. Barrington, so we'll have six elementary schools that are above the 125%. Barrington is significantly reduced by some of the efforts that we made last year to reduce overcrowding in the north-central. They're down from 219% last year to 141%. So I think that's a great improvement there. Cook, Pillow, Riley, Waldridge, and Wooton will all be above that 125%. It's important to note, though, that McBee and Walnut Creek are projected to no longer be overcrowded with the addition of the north-central elementary school number one, which will open up next year. And it's anticipated that once we open up north-central elementary school number two, we'll have significant reductions both at Cook and Waldridge. There's only one elementary school in this region, Ridgetop, that's projected to be below But again, these calculations are not reflective of the students that transfer into that school due to the dual-language program. Four elementary schools in the northeast region of the district will be above 125%. Andrews, Graham, Harris, and Pickle. And four schools will be on the monitored list, between 115 and 125%, being Blanton, Hart, Jordan, and Overton. Again, great improvements to Graham and Hart through the addition of the Doby Pre-K Center that helped relieve the overcrowding at both of those schools. However, both of those schools are projected to increase more over the next five years. One elementary school win is anticipated to be below 75% capacity, but just barely at 73%. It may be able to be used to relieve some overcrowding, but not to any significant degree. In central Austin, two elementary schools are above 125%, Bracker Woods and Travis. Cassis is at 125%. And four elementary schools are below 75%, being Becker, Dawson, Lee, and Matthews. In the east, one elementary school, Linder, is above 125%, although this is a significant improvement from last year with the opening of Up House Early Childhood Center. Six elementary schools in east Austin will be below 75%. In southwest Austin, we only have one school that will be above 125%. That's Patton at 138%. And two elementary schools will be monitored between 115 and 125%, being Baldwin and Keiker. In south-central, kind of a mixed bag here. We have two elementary schools in south-central, Barronoff and Odom, that'll be above 125%. Two on the monitored list, Menchaca and Pleasant Hill. And two that are below, Boone and Jocelyn. And as Dennis reported to you, we do expect to see significant growth in south-central area. In the southeast, four elementary schools will be above 125%. Actually, all four of those schools are above 150%. Blasor, Langford, Perez, and Rodriguez. And one school, Houston, is on the monitor list. At the middle school level, 12 of our 18 middle schools are projected to have increases in population, although none of those are projected to be more than 60 students. So nothing too dramatic in any one area. Six of the 18 middle schools are projected to either have no growth or a decline, although the decline will be no more than 60 students at any of those schools. So fairly flat at the middle school level. Two schools will be above 125%, Burnett and Martin. And four schools are less than 75%, Garcia, Lamar, Pierce, and Small. And just as a note here, I do factor in the two magnet programs at Fullmore and Keeling when I do add to the population there. At the high school, 10 of our 11 high schools are projected to increase, although none of them will be increasing more than 150 students. So again, growth across the board, but nothing too significant. So at this point, that ends my presentation. I think we'd be happy to entertain questions that you have of any of us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help. And thank you to our two guests, Mr. Rood and Mr. Robinson, for being here tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, Board, this time we'll open it up for questions from our panelists. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you for the information, Dennis and Beth. Appreciate it. Got multiple questions from multiple people, so just kind of bear with me if you would. Beth, let me just ask something that struck me as a little bit inconsistent in the way that you presented the information here recently. And my understanding was that you said that you factored in the magnet programs at Fullmore and Keeling
Correct.
Into the attendance zone projections. Is that correct?
I took the program size and added that into the population this year, just in an effort to make Keeling make a little bit more sense.
Right.
Otherwise, it's
Okay. I get it. I agree, okay? But why are we not doing something similar for like dual-language programs that are, at Becker as an example? And, you know, factoring in those additions as well?
I chose only those two magnet programs because they have a cap on their enrollment for those programs. Keeling is capped at 800 and Fullmore's at 300. So it just seemed like there was a very clear cutoff point there.
Okay. Thank you. That helps me understand. Dr. Harner, if I can ask you, good to see you again, sir. This is getting to be a longtime thing, isn't it? You mentioned Colony Park is an example, and, I mean, you and I were both around when we talked about putting Garcia Middle School out there to serve a projected population that still has not arrived at that point. That's been over 10 years. My impression is that the Goodnight Ranch also falls into that category, that we've been talking about growth in southeast Austin based largely on Goodnight for about the same amount of time.
I think, yes, I agree with you. The Colony Park never even got to a land plan of any kind. It never got beyond talking about it. I think the city owns the land. Now, Goodnight, we never projected growth in Goodnight based upon that knowledge of it, but that has now moved into the system, if you will, in the planning department. So we haven't projected growth in Goodnight either at this point in time. You're right. These things have plagued us for years.
Okay. And it just, to me, it kind of tilts the presentation in some degree and actually planning efforts as well, too. I mean, we're going to be talking about a bond here, and some of the bond things are based on these same projections. But, you know, when you start talking about areas such as Colony Park or Goodnight that have been in this state for a long time, it's easy to get to the point where you're looking at projections and you're still wondering, even after, like in the case of Garcia, whether you built a school out there, but you still don't have the population there to support either the planning of a school or the actual building of it in some cases. So, you know, it's kind of hard. When you get into those areas in that part of the world, it's hard to say, you know, that's right on target, you know, we need to go that way. So, and I'm not sure which one of the three of you is going to be best to answer this, but one of the things we've seen, particularly in north-central, northwest Austin, is a lot of growth in terms of kids that are showing up at schools that, they were never under-enrolled as such, but they're getting to be more pressured in terms of their enrollment. Murchison is an example that pops up. And, you know, Murchison, for me, is a little bit of a hard point because if you look at the capacity of the school, and we wanted to talk about that a little bit, but if you look at the capacity of the school versus what's in the actual attendance zone or what the membership from the attendance zone at the school is, a school like Murchison is not overcrowded. But how are we factoring in, getting back to the transfer issue, because there's a lot of transfers at Murchison that puts it up over 1,400 kids, was it like 250, 300, something like that, transfers?
Yeah, in that neighborhood.
Right. But I'm looking for how are we monitoring the, I mean, there's no new 400 student, or 400 house development going in in that attendance zone. But, you know, how are we monitoring when houses are resold? Or, you know, the family that was, didn't have any kids there, they all moved out to college, sold the house, and now you've got a young family coming in that may have a kid or two that's already there and maybe two or three that might join the party later, as it was. So do you
That'll slowly creep into the demographic profile that will go with any of those attendance zones when you start to see increases, in particular in K and 1. That's when you know you've got kids, families turning over in the district. A lot of these areas have become kind of old, so that, and the houses are recycling. You're right. So, but we do look at the profile of the enrollment of those attendance zones in helping us. Well, in fact, that's part and parcel of the projection because to get a kindergarten projection, what I do is I take K and 1, average them, the two, and that's my K projection for next year.
Okay. And Mr. Robinson, I wanted to ask you while you were here, I'm sure you're familiar with the educational impact statement that various members of the city council and the school board have talked about implementing in some way to get just a better view of things. I'd like you to think about if there's a way that, for these houses that are turned over, if you know of any way or can think of any way, that we might be able to monitor those sales and the families that move in. So you could have something that would be the functional equivalent of an educational impact statement. I mean, those were, at least in all the time that I've talked about them and other board members have talked about them and council members as well, always geared towards new construction and, you know, how that's going to impact things or if a permit comes in and we tear down an apartment complex and we build mixed-use retail home stuff. But I'm struggling to think of a way that we can do that for the individual homes that go through. And if you have any thoughts or insight on that, I'd certainly like to hear from you. I don't expect an answer right now unless you already know something, but, you know, at some point, I would like to discuss the matter, either through this body or through the joint subcommittee.
I appreciate that. I do have a quick comment about that because I thought you were going to go one way. The efforts that the city has put behind the educational impact statement, I think, have been impressive. We've brought together a wide, wide variety of folks. But I will say that what that process is missing, and then I say this with an enormous amount of respect, what I think Dr. Harner's model also does not take into account, and it's not, this isn't the first time that we've tried to get our arms around it, but if we could develop some type of predictive model to try and predict the next Riverside or the next Quail Creek, and maybe that's not as crazy hard as it might sound, but some collaborative, collaborative effort where we identify, you know, the multifamily stock that was created in the 90s, it's aging, it's going to be ripe for that next wave. And so certainly, we do want to spend time looking at new construction and asking ourselves, how many kids are we going to get from the new multifamily? But I think that as maybe sort of a side effort, we could put some effort into, what is that next part of town where we're going to get a ton of kids and there hasn't been any new construction? So that's kind of where I'd go with that. The individual house thing is interesting. I had not thought about that. Let me ponder your notion there. Of course, Murchison is attracting those transfers because it sets such an extremely high academic bar. And then the other one, quick comment, and I say this with respect, to me, Colony Park and Goodnight Ranch are fundamentally different animals. Goodnight Ranch was at the, and Eldon, jump in and tell me if I'm wrong here. It was, it was about ready to start producing housing when the recession of '08 came in and shut that down. Colony Park has been sort of a different kind of political on-again, off-again. I mean, for, for us now, it's going to be a showcase sort of development where we look at the principles of Imagine Austin and try and implement them. From what Terry Mitchell tells me in Goodnight Ranch, things are now lining up where that one's ready to go. So to me, that they're slightly different animals.
Yeah, I would agree with you. The Goodnight Ranch, finally, is probably getting close to a period where we'll actually execute development out there. It's not done, so it hasn't started, so there are not rooftops there yet, but the market has dictated that in that area, given the low level of lot supply and the fact that the project is about ready to kick off, that it's probably going to happen this time. We'll see.
Great.
I'll yield for now.
Dr. Mathias.
First of all, thank you all for pulling together all this data. This is really rich and gives us as a board a lot to be able to talk about and to consider as we look toward the future and toward making decisions. Thank you for the data, especially when I look at the data for the under-enrollment of District 2 and East Austin schools, I'm just, I'm left almost speechless, that we're projecting the Allen Attendance Zone to be enrolled at about 54%, Savali at 59%, Blackshear at 46%. These numbers are, this is the first time I've seen these numbers. I know as administrators, you've seen these before, but these are, they're alarming. And thank you, too. The map that I found most interesting was on page 27 of the report that you prepared, Dr. Harner, which has to do with the bachelor's degrees, the educational level of persons living in the city of Austin. When we look at that, it just tells us a lot about the resources, the educational resources that our students have at home. So appreciated your inclusion of that map. I have namely two questions and one observation. The first question is simply that as you begin your report, Dr. Harner, you speak of Austin, the Austin ISD, having the second lowest growth of all central Texas school districts. One question, and Maynor, Maynor has a growth rate 19 times greater than Austin, if I'm reading it correctly. So how it is that, that these districts could be growing so much more rapidly than Austin would be my question. And also, there's a question of the various, the losses of students and the numbers of students that comprise each district. So on page four, we see that AISD's largest loss, has the largest loss of any school district of white students, Caucasian students. Why that would be? Any idea where those students are going? And also, AISD has the lowest Hispanic growth by far of all of those school districts. So I would welcome any insights that any of us have with respect to those trends or those data points.
You kind of caught me a little off-guard here. I applaud you for reading it so closely. I don't have all the numbers cast in memory, but these are just the data that, they are what they are. These are the enrollments that come from these different school districts to the AEIS. And in terms of, you know, we all know that the growth has been in the halo, if you will, starting with the Leander ISD, Round Rock, Flugerville, Maynor to a lesser degree, Del Valley is doing pretty well, and then Hayes. Eames is flat, Austin's flat, Lake Travis is growing. So that's kind of the geographic perspective, if you will. Now, in terms of the race and ethnicity, the angle of population has been declining in the, in the AISD for a long time. Now, I don't know the percentages, but that's been going on. The Hispanic, a lot of the Hispanic population growth has been in the adjacent districts. And the other aspect of this, the whole thing that kind of complicates things is the decline in the African-American enrollment in the east Austin area and the increase, though, in two particular districts, Flugerville and Hutto. So there is a trend in the movement of people that you can kind of, you know, glean from those AEIS data. But did I get to your question at all?
I'm simply interested in observations. I don't know if any of the rest of us has, have observations about the trends and the data points that we're seeing, especially with respect to demographics, and I see we have a comment here.
I would like to just say, in terms of growth in the areas around us, there tends to be more available land. You know, we're beginning to get full here in Austin.
And another thing you brought up, the decline in enrollment out of East Austin, 78702 in particular, it is dramatic, and it's a function, I think, of a lot of things, but housing values have gotten to the place where a lot of people have just been flat-priced out of the market. And we're seeing gentrification, and Ryan, I'm sure can deal with that. It's just, the loss of people out of 78702 has been so dramatic that it's really impacted those two elementary schools that are on the north side of the river, whose attendance zone stretched into the Linder Zone south of the river. It's just startling. It's just startling. And another point, though, back here, I'm kind of trying to connect the dots here. The apartment profile in the Riverside area, that is, is, I think, a major planning effort for the city, is going to affect some other areas in the next 10, and 20, and 30 years. So what they develop on Riverside, I think, will become a model for some of these other areas that are going to have deterioration in the multifamily. We're seeing that already.
I'll make a comment on the housing, in terms of the area. I mean, my company, Metro Study, we track new lot development, home construction in the entire region. And for a number of years, this has been true, and this will accelerate in the years to come. Most of the new home construction that we're seeing is outside of the city of Austin, outside of Travis County, and most of it is in those areas where there's more developable land and infrastructure, Maynor, Hutto, Flugerville, Kyle, Buta, et cetera. And we expect to see that accelerate, like I said, in the years to come. And part of it is based on price and affordability. Builders can construct homes that are generally in price ranges that are more in reach of a greater percent of the population in those suburban areas, as contrasted to core Austin.
Good. One observation and one question. So, the observation I have is, on page 15 of your report, Dr. Harner, you talk about key observations so far as they relate to AISD. Thank you for that. What I'd be interested in in the future is, and I'm not asking this of you, but simply to be able to compare the key findings that we're seeing for the district with the key findings that we have as a city and as a region. It's just, it's fascinating for us to be able to see, what are the key findings that you've come up with, and what does that mean for us as a board? Last question, simply has to do with these middle schools, because I suspect that we as a board are going to be talking about schools like Garcia and Pierce in weeks to come. And what I'm reading in this report is, slide 32 of your presentation talks about Garcia, you're projecting Garcia to be at 58 percent capacity, and Pierce at 72 percent, and if we added Lamar to the conversation, Lamar at 63 percent, we are going to have various facilities that are very underutilized. I'm wondering, and maybe this is a follow-up to Robert's observation, why it is that the enrollment is so low in those schools? Certainly, we projected, we built out these facilities. Any insights into why it is that the enrollment is so low at schools like Pierce and Garcia?
Well, again, the numbers that you're looking at aren't reflective of the enrollment. They're reflective of the student population. So it's reflective of the number of students who live in that neighborhood. So, I don't know, these numbers don't reflect why students are choosing to stay or choosing not to stay. I can say, in the Pierce attendance area, that that is an area that is going through some change. It's, it's an older neighborhood, and it may come on the uptick after a period of time, but now it has, it has sort of flattened out. I don't know if Dennis could speak to that further.
Mr. President, Trustee of Works, Trustee Mathias. Also, while we don't have formal studies of why parents make their choices, one of the things we do have is when, when families utilize our transfer systems, they will indicate in a anecdotal self-reporting-type way why they are seeking their transfer. And it ranges from a wide selection of things, but it can be as simple as, I really need to make this transfer because it's closer to my work, I work two jobs, and for me to be able to pick up my kid, and I've got to do this, and that's where my childcare is, right? So they'll move for very personal family reasons. Some move because they have the option through No Child Left Behind transfers. You know, school is failing, you have a choice, you get free transportation. Some parents will opt for that. But they'll also list things like, you know, they wanted to utilize some of our schools of choice, some of our magnet schools, they'll, they'll list that. And can you remember some of the others? But, but there's like, there's, and depending on the family, a lot of our staff live right here in Austin. If you have school-age kids, especially at the elementary level, the staff typically will bring their student to that school, their child to the school where they teach. So we see a lot of different reasons. They are self-reported. I've shared some of those before with the board, but, but there's, there does seem to be a bit of a, of a mix. But if people can have a choice, if you will, they can pick where they go, and there's something about the programming, or, or something that makes their life easier to manage and live, they will exercise that flexibility. They will utilize our options within the system to be able to make that happen. And I think I provided that list before, but, and again, recently. But if there's any others, but that's the only thing we really have, that we have as self-reporting.
Right.
Thank you.
Ms. Moy, and then Ms. Inahosh.
Thank you. Thank you all for the report. I always look forward to you guys coming, because I have a passion for, for housing in the Austin area. And Eldon, thanks for talking about the fact that it's a lot more affordable for families to afford housing in the surrounding areas like Del Valley, and Kyle, and Buta, and Hutto, and Maynor, which is, has a lot to do with why our, many of our families are going those directions. So, you know, I know I've challenged you guys before, Ryan, I know I've said this to you before, about Austin finding a way to make housing affordable, and I'm not talking about subsidized housing, I'm talking about housing for the middle income. Because, because we, we, we need to keep, you know, our families in Austin, and we can't price everybody out. It's sad to see in 78702 how many of our native Austinite families have had to leave. And even though they have families with young children, you know, grandchildren, and et cetera, that could, could benefit from living there, even if you put everybody in the house, they still can't afford the taxes. So, because of the high, the high appraisal values. But I was surprised to see, because I didn't know that Bradshaw Crossing was still developing. I thought it was done. So I didn't realize that one was still, was still building. I was surprised to see that the Hollowitz-Slaughter Creek was actually going to have that many, that many properties, because I thought it, to me, it looks like a really small area, and I didn't realize they were going to have that many. So I'm trying to figure out where they're going to be building. I'm going to have to drive over there and see what's going on. Also, I just noticed, Estancia, I just noticed a sign out there, so I haven't been able to figure out exactly what's intended to go there. I know you're saying multi-use, but multi-use like what?
Everything.
Like, I mean, multi-use like Mueller multi-use?
No, it's going to have a mix of offices and multifamily, and I saw the land plan. I don't think, is there any single, I don't think there's single-family in there.
Well, and Estancia, they're at I-35.
At I-35, it's the Old Heap Ranch.
Right. A, a public builder recently purchased, I think somewhere over 300 single-family lots, future.
Lennar.
Lennar, right. So their plans are to commence lot development and home construction down there in the next 12 to 18 months. Obviously, they will not build them all at once, but they'll sell over time.
So what concerns me, when, when we talk about multi-use in that area down there, is there are already so many apartments, when you look at Over Office South First, there's that other apartment complex going in right behind the, right on South First and Slaughter, right behind the property where they have the little airstrip. And I guess the airstrip's going away. And so there's those apartments going in, there's the ones over by where the old Adams Extract used to be, that are, that are going in, and then the ones on the corner of South First and 1626. So now we're saying that a little bit further down the road, right on the edge of, of AISD, we've got another bunch of apartments going in. That makes me nervous, because the schools over there can't handle that kind of, that kind of student growth, nor can the roads, nor can the roads, Ryan. And Cascades of Onion Creek, what is that? That one's new to me, too.
Oh, that's, that's the one just south of the Onion Creek subdivision. It's had a number of names, right there, east of 35, south of the Country Club.
Where that church is? That church is up on the hill?
No, it's down, it's, it's a big tract of land.
I can't place it.
It was referred to, I think, as Fox Hill, several years ago. It's immediately south of Onion Creek, on the east side of 35. I'm not sure how many lots, several hundred lots, potentially, there.
And it also has multifamily in it, too. But I've seen the complete plan for it, and it's got single-family and multifamily. It'll, it'll be very large.
The church is perched above.
Above, on top of the hill, right? Because the church is, is, is the traditional voting box for Onion Creek, so, so that's, you know, my marker for, you know.
I personally share your concern about the multifamily along I-35. It's, it's up and down the road, it's going in. A lot of it's under construction right now.
So, Ryan, you know, when we talk about, you know, educational impact studies, what do we, what can we do about this to influence the type of development because of the, the school availability, and because, you know, we really can't handle that kind of growth? I realize it's not going to happen all at once, I understand that. But, but what can we do about it to manage it? And when we talk about, about the type of, of single-family homes that are being built, what, what concerns me is that a lot of these builders are building their medium-to-low, low-end homes, which is driving the, which is driving the, you know, the type of developments, which so many of those properties, in, within a few years, turn over and become rental property. And so, I, I don't, I don't, I would like to see the city start requiring, that they start building their medium-to, maybe not their high-end, but certainly, you know, their higher-end products, rather than their low-end products. Because if we want to increase the, the, the demographic diversity of our campuses and our educational opportunities, that's how you do it. You know, by, by bringing in different, different income levels, rather than, than segregating because of the way the builders are building certain types of populations. And that's the, what's bothered me for years about how Austin builds. So, Ryan, I'm going to give you a list. You know, things, Lori's wish list on how we change the Austin, the Austin housing market to make it affordable for everyone.
I'd be more than happy to take that list. But, you know, my, my colleague planners, that's their dream, is to create, or promote, or allow mixed-income neighborhoods. And I think Miller was sort of seen as maybe the quintessential, you know, goal, and I think we need to take a hard look at what's really happening at Miller, and ask ourselves, is that really producing the kind of mixed-income neighborhood that we all sort of thought it was going to? I'll step out and, and offer something provocative. I would say that's less than as mixed as we wanted it to be, to sort of sound, you know, equivocated. It is really hard to create those mixed-income neighborhoods. And then in terms of, you know, my thought about all of that multifamily that's coming up, in pure, good-old-fashioned mushroom style on South First, I mean, it's really fascinating. There are even a couple of site plans that have come in within the last month, and Dennis knows of those. My concern is maybe not so much for that housing stock, but the effect that that new stock will have on B-class property. And so, the theory is that you pop up all this, this brand-new stock, and it draws from the other stock, and then you, you start to take a couple of steps down the road, where we're then creating that next Riverside, or that next Quail Creek. And again, that's what I think, and again, it's easier said than done, but if we could make that a part of the EIS, or if we could try and, you know, give a shot at incorporating that, I don't think we're going to get a lot of kids out of the new multifamily on South First, but that's not to say that it won't impact the housing stock as a whole in ways that will be difficult to, to manage. But if nothing else, at least, we do now have an educational impact statement. I think we're moving, you know, in the right direction. So yes, we'll take any of those elements that we can and try and factor them in. Can we do anything about affordability for the middle class? I'm not sure. I mean, that is going to be a tough nut to crack, because we're a victim of our own success. I mean, the more Austin attracts households, the bigger this problem is going to become. And because you guys have really got a slice of the city, then in my mind, it's just going to become more and more affluent over time. It's, it's, it's a challenge that you're going to continue to have.
Right. Well, one of the things that I've noticed in that South First corridor is that a lot of the, a lot of people in those single-family homes that have been there, say, eight, nine, 10 years, are leaving, because they don't want, there's enough traffic as there is now, with very little traffic control, meaning lights, and, and so they're leaving. And to go elsewhere, and most of the, the people that I know that are leaving are going southwest. I think it's intriguing that Estancia is going to be there, and some of these others that are going to have single-family homes, that maybe they would be interested in, in staying in that part of town, I don't know. But, but it's driving, you know, our, our solid middle-class families away, and, which I find incredibly sad, since I'm a South Austin girl, born and bred, and so, South Austin to me is the place. And so, I get very disappointed when I see things like that happening. And I see a lot of my fellow South Austinites in the room, so, you know, and to keep plugging along for our part-of-town guys. And so, but the other thing, when we talk about Riverside, you know, a lot of the development on Riverside, but, you know, past east of, east of Pleasant Valley, is Del Valley ISD. So you see, you know, there's a lot of single-family homes going in, there's a lot of stuff going on, but it's not us. Because we, you know, we end right there on Pleasant Valley, then go around like this, and like this, and like this, and, you know, all this kind of stuff. But a lot of those new, those new housing developments aren't going to impact us at all, except, you know, it just looks like it, because it's right there next door. So I'll, I'll yield for now, and maybe you come back later. I'm going to make you a list, Ryan, I promise.
Ms. Inahosh, and then Ms. Teish.
I just wanted to get clarification from Ms. Wilson. I think you said in response to Trustee Mathias's question about Exhibit E, about the middle schools, that lists Garcia, those percentages. So let me just make sure I understand, those percentages are of kids who are in the attendance zone, but they may not necessarily be attending those schools? So, so those, those percentages are not of the kids who are actually in those schools?
Correct. And, and another point of clarification is that they are just AISD students. So that does not take into consideration students that are enrolled in a private school or a charter school either. So it's just AISD students.
What is, this percentage doesn't?
That number, the number of students in that population of that attendance zone is just known AISD students that we've pushed forward through time in five years. Plus, factoring in any new growth. But it does not take into consideration students that are choosing other options, non-AISD options. Okay? And in that particular area, there are private schools and charter schools that do attract some of our students.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Did you want to?
No, no.
Okay. And, Dr. Harner, I wanted to get some clarification on it. I think it's page six, five or six of your presentation. Page six. I'm sorry, page four down here, six here. How net migration affects projections, Exhibit A.
Your slide four.
And you did point out the, the difference between the ninth and 10th graders as opposed, I'm sorry, the eighth and ninth graders, and how we, we have increased population in that category, but all along, we're having decreased population, and I would just, I don't understand why.
Okay. I'm not an educator, but what happens is, is kids go from the eighth to the ninth grade, and then to go to the, from the ninth to the 10th grade, they have to have a certain number of credits. And if they don't get the credits, they show up again when they should be 10th graders, but they're still classified as 9th graders. So we get a slight increase there. This is a, I see this everywhere I go. They're not, they're still in school, and a lot of them will never touch foot in the 10th grade. They'll eventually end up in the 11th grade when they get their credit situation corrected, if you will. So is that, once again, I'm not an educator, and I think that's what happens, that's how it's been explained to me, but it happens everywhere I go. Always an increase between eighth and ninth.
That may, the curriculum's maybe more rigorous at that point, and so.
I don't know what the reason would be. I think they have to have a certain number of credits to get to the 10th grade.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Teish.
I think I heard you, Ryan, mention an educational impact statement that's the city of Austin. Is it already prepared? And could we have a copy?
Absolutely. I want to think that it's a work in progress, that it's continuing to evolve, but let me check with colleague Julie Lipton, who was sort of the project manager on that. And, yeah, we definitely want to make, we want to share, share that work, and- want to share, share that work and, and even take it above that and have it be collaborative. Do you, I guess, maybe if I can, is, do you see it as a collaborative process? Is that something we need to work on and make it more? Because I don't want it to be one-sided.
It, it would be nice to have it that way, yes, sir, because to help our, to both get in front of the curve and to, to help in planning, absolutely.
Okay. Well, let me see what I can do to try and dial up the collaborative nature of that. But if nothing else, I can, I'll, I'll tell Julie to, to contact you. But my sense is it's not a complete work, but it's something that we're, that we're interested in improving. So...
Thank you.
Ms. Ellen's, and then I'll wrap this up.
I just have a clarification question. If you look on, Mr. Harner, on your slide 13, the build-out numbers, I think you mentioned this, and I might have missed it. What is the timeframe for that slide versus what we're looking at on slide seven? Oh, that's a forever?
Forever.
Okay.
It's just at some point in time in the future. It, once again, it just depends upon how soon the land is absorbed. And then, of course, it'll change over time. You know that. Nothing stays the same for that long, but that's kind of forever.
So, on the slide seven, where you really kind of build it out per year, that's more of a planning tool for us?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think the build-out is, is useful and instructive, because, you know, you're, you're thinking about, well, how many high schools are we going to eventually have? Well, by my calculation, you're going to have, what do we have now, 11? And you're going to need three more at some point in time, over time.
As long as I'm here, I don't think there is anything such as build-out. I think that the build-out, it's, it's a long time from now, but it's, it's really a moving target. I mean, if Austin is still as economically vibrant 30 years from now as it, as it is today, then I think build-out is a whole new horizon. So, not to be argumentative, but...
No. It's good. I like it.
Discussion is always helpful.
That's why I said it, it's going to change over time. You know, density has changed north central Austin from what it was 20 years ago to, to what it is today. And it's got probably twice as many people in it.
And I'll give you another observation as soon as Ms. Ellen's finished. No, no. I wasn't rushing you. All right. Well, let me wrap this up. First of all, let me thank our panelists. I really appreciate all of the information. This is a difficult subject. No matter how much data you have, you'd like to have more data on certain things, and I'm going to ask you about a certain piece of data. Because, you know, we in urban, in an urban district like Austin, need to try to understand why children, you know, you project a certain number, thousands of students that are possibly going to be here, but we don't realize all of those. And it sort of gets to Dr. Mathias', so why are they leaving? Where are they going? Is there anything we can do? How fast are they leaving? And in which areas are they leaving from? One ratio that would be very interesting would be the ratio of actual enrollment in a school to the number of students living in the actual attendance zone. You know, if that were one, then that means we're capturing every student in that attendance zone. If that's anything less than one, then that means we're, we're not. And following that ratio would help us, over time, to see, are we continuing to lose students every year? Are we, are we not? If that number were plus, greater than that, that means we have students transferring into that school from other schools, and that tells us something. So, that ratio would actually be very helpful. I want to speak to Mr. Snyder's, and actually, to Ms. Ellen's point, you know, I've, obviously, I'm very familiar with Merkison. And there are five reasons why Merkison has what it is. And it's the combination of all five that has really put that student, that school in a, in a burden. First of all, we had NCLB students that, that ended up going to, to the school. We always have diversity choice students that go to that school. The economy, you know, just as the, the economy hit AISD, the economy hits parents living in that area. And so, some parents that felt they could no longer afford to send their kids to private school recognized that Merkison had a, a good enough school that, that they really felt, hey, we're going to try Merkison. And so, we actually had students that came back, parents that came back to Merkison that had not gone there before with, with other students. The reputation of the school, and as, as, you know, we, we sort of have this dual edged sword. We want our schools to get better, and when they get better, we get more kids, and then we have the problem of overcrowding. So, as schools have gotten better, and what I have heard from Ms. Hauser at, at Anderson is oftentimes, some of the students coming in from private school aren't as well-prepared for Anderson as they would like to be. And so, that starts to get back and saying, well, maybe you ought to send your kid to Merkison to get, make sure they're ready to get, to go to Anderson, because they're going to have a tou, have a tough time at Anderson. And then the last thing is UT Austin. You know, with all the build-out that UT, that the, the, sort of, the area around West Campus has done, it has attracted a lot of the students that were living out in the far west area, and has, they've, they've chosen to move where it's at. Okay? So, the apartments in far west Austin have now been populated by, you guessed it, people with kids, and people that now want to send their children to a school that's within walking distance. Those apartments are very within walking distance of DOS and, and Merkison. And so, now we've realized some of those families that, before, that was sort of a, of a student area, where you didn't have kids. They were going, they were living in that area. So, when you add all those factors up, even if it's 50 or 100 at a time, all of a sudden, you got 1,500 students, and they all sort of happened at one time. We're not going to change the UT situation, because I think, you know, we're going to continue to have folks that are going to want to live in that area, because it's, there's some good schools there. As long as we have diversity choice in NCLB, we're not going to change that. And as long as Merkison continues to be a good school, it's going to be well thought of, and people are going to opt it over a private school. And if they already live there, as I understand it, if they were going to a private school before, they weren't in our count, right?
No.
And so, now if they come back, all of a sudden, it appears as though, where'd they come from? Well, they were there. We just didn't have them in our count. So, so we have seen that, that anomaly or that issue happen at Merkison, and that's, that's sort of a, a situation. But how do you plan for it? You can't. All you can do is just track it and continue to try and, to, to work with it. And then, when it happens, impose and ask people to be patient with you long enough to solve the problem. So, once again, thank you very much. Thank you to staff. This is a difficult problem, and we greatly appreciate all the work that you've done. And thank you, Mr. Robinson and Mr. Root, for being here this after, this evening. Thank you very much. Okay. Dr. Krasarfen, we'll move to the next item.
Yes, Mr. President and trustees. The next item on your agenda is the agenda item regarding the roles and responsibilities of trustees and the administration in regard to a potential bond proposal. The board has requested clarification regarding the boundaries within which the board and the administration may operate in advance of a potential AISD bond or tax ratification election, particularly because we've been talking about a potential bond election for May of 2013. Our Chief of Staff and Legal Counsel for the Administration, Mel Waxler, is here to give you that information regarding the various legal requirements prescribing the conduct of the Board of Trustees and Employees while a potential election in our case may be conducted. Mr. Waxler, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, short answer. District may not use public funds for advertising, mailings, et cetera, supporting or opposing the passage or defeat of a measure. Okay, let me underscore that one more time. The district may not use public funds to support or oppose, advocate for or against a particular measure. So, you begin to think of all of the ways in which you could mistakenly use public funds in order to do that, including the use of the district's email system, including the use of district facilities. So, it's okay for the district to provide factual information. And we have to be very clear that it is a jack web approach, right? Just the facts. So, there is often a fine line between presenting the facts and appearing to advocate. So, it's pretty clear, if you say, as the superintendent, which she shall not do, please, please support the bonds, right? Please support the bonds. On the other hand, she and her team can certainly come in with data that identifies what the needs of the district may be. And in a situation in which there is community present, and district staff are present, district staff may provide a just the facts presentation, and then be excused, so that others, part of a private committee or even board members, can make remarks to the group without staff present. If this happens to be occurring on district facilities, on district property, then not only must staff be careful, but in that situation, even board members must be careful, so as not to give an appearance that we are using district resources to advocate for or against a particular bond measure. One other thing that I want to mention is that we have a responsibility as a district to be certain to provide materials, both in English and in Spanish. So, and that is at all times. We don't, as a district, say, well, gosh, we can provide these in English, but no need to provide those in Spanish. It is an absolute across the board. Okay. Let me be clear, that if a board member is out in the public domain, and you are using your own resources, and it is your own time, you are free to advocate as you may wish to do so. I also want to make clear that it's the Texas Ethics Commission that is the enforcer, the regulator in this area. I've been through these campaigns enough to know that most of the employees of the Texas Ethics Commission have children who go to AISD schools. And I have been called often by the parents of these children with all kinds of questions. So, our location in Austin requires us even to be more dutiful about compliance with the law. And the, the Texas Ethics Commission strictly interprets the law when it comes to the use of public resources, district resources. So, violations of these statutes, I want to make this very clear, can result not only in complaints being filed with the commission that we'll have to address and respond to, and that could find their way into the media, which is never a good thing, but also in, in criminal prosecution. Let me say that one more time. But also in criminal prosecution. For example, in 1999, as the result of a sworn complaint being filed, the commission fined the superintendent of the Northeast Independent School District for using school funds to promote the school district's bond issue. The superintendent in that case violated the law by writing an article that stated, and here's the quote, "Our citizens now have the opportunity to position the Northeast Independent School District for the 21st century. Please support the vision. Our future depends on it." The commission determined that this phrase, among other things, violated the election code. The Leander Independent School District in 2003 ran into the same trouble. In 2002, the Williamson District Commissioners Court had been the subject of an enforcement action resulting in fines for unlawful use of public funds for political advertising. So, it's not enough to stay away from phrases such as "vote for the bonds." Other less direct commentary on the part of administrators of a political subdivision, and in some instances, a board member on school property may have, may lend itself to being interpreted to cross the line into unlawful political advertising. So, board members, at this time, I'm going to close and open it up for any questions. I also have a memo from which I'm reading. And once I hear the questions from board members, if there is anything I can do to supplement the memo, then the memo will be provided to all board members, as well as, as we typically do to all staff who need to know.
Okay, board members. Thank you very much, Mr. Waxler. Appreciate your guidance as always. Any questions, board members? Mr. Snyder, and then Mr. Dr. Mathi, Dr. Mathias, we'll let you go first.
So, Mr. Waxler, I, I think our question as trustees then is, presuming we're not on school property.
Mm-hmm.
What should we not say, or what can we not say? Because I'm hearing you say that we can advocate for the issue. Is there anything that we cannot or should not say?
If, if you're not on school property, then there's not really anything that you cannot say, of course, that is not of an advocacy nature, as long as you're not on school property and you're not using any sort of public resources. You don't have any materials, that you have used district copiers and/or district paper to produce.
Okay. And even, anything that we write, are we, as trustees, able to write anything?
If it is on your own time, with your own resources, including your own pen, your own paper.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Waxler, I would take it that the inverse is equally true. Like, if a board or a staff member of the district wanted to go out and say, this is just the silliest idea I've heard, and, you know, you shouldn't be doing this, that kind of thing, that under the same circumstances, using district resources on district property, it would not be allowable either. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Parksdale?
Did the superintendent in your example use district property? The superintendent in your example, with the quote that you shared, does it make it clear?
Only, and let me see if I understand the question. Only to present factual information?
I mean, in your example of where there was Northeast.
Right.
Did they, did that superintendent use school, use district property resources or...
In this particular case, it was about the language that he used. It was about the language that he used.
Okay.
Whether or not there was a use of public resources was not the issue in this particular complaint. In this particular case, he said, please support the vision. Our future depends on it. And that was deemed to be advocacy by the commission, and inappropriate and unacceptable under the law.
Okay. So, so district staff cannot advocate under any circumstances?
That is correct.
Okay.
They can, they cannot. And in most of these campaigns, you see, the district staff cannot advocate. They can only be a jack web type of information deliverer. Okay? And my office in the past, and I don't know if you know this, but I had the experience of chairing a bonds committee in the mid-'90s for the Austin Independent School District. So, I've been very careful about this, even from my own vantage point for a long time. We ask that if any question arises, to please contact our office and give us an opportunity to review the language and/or to review the fact situations and give you an opinion. Yes. So glad you asked that question.
Mr. Snyder, just, I want to pick up on one question. I think, Dr. Krasarfen, were you going to clarify something?
I know. I just, I had a, I had a question that, you know, we often get questions from trustees.
Yes.
And so, let's say someone has a question, they, they... And so, let's say someone has a question, the trustee's going to follow all the rules, they're going to go off the school campus, on their own time, they're using their own pen, blah, blah, blah. But in preparation for that, they ask a question like, what is, what is Merkison? I want to know all the details of what Merkison's getting, given the over enrollment and blah, 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 blah. And they have another big question about something and staff spends a couple of hours trying to answer, you know, a question. You're not doing it yourself, you've asked a question. Is that legal, like whether you can ask a question, then take that information and go talk about it?
Yes. So, let me just check for understanding on this. So, a board member sends a superintendent a question about Merkison. We provide with factual information.
Oh, sorry.
And the board member then takes that factual information and shares that factual information with a group of community members off of district property. And once that's happened, then the board member says, "Oh, my God, we need this so bad. Please vote for the bonds." A board member can do that. We as staff could not do that.
But we can, but we can do the work.
But we can provide factual information, absolutely.
Wow. Okay. Wow. And then, I just wanted to be sure, staff can't advocate in the same way that the board can on their own time?
And off district property.
Oh, so you can. No, staff can.
No, sorry, staff can.
Okay.
Wow. Ms. Ellen.
Ever. Nothing. We do nothing.
We cannot advocate for or against.
We just educate and we can be anywhere when we do it.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to follow up a little bit more with that, so all of this information we're getting in our packets about the bond and all of the, you know, months and months of detail, that's considered factual information that we can take forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And just to show you that we're serious, we have a member of the district attorney's office in the audience, making sure we follow suit here. Who shall remain anonymous.
I'm not turning around.
Dr. Mathias.
I'm really uncomfortable. Could the veil not be pierced? If a trustee were to ask for information from the administration, could that not be seen as the use of public resources? I want to avoid all liability here.
No, 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 no. I support you in this and I so treasure board members who are very cautious about this stuff. But if what you're asking for is factual information and what you get is factual information and what you share is that factual information, you may add your own opinion to it in a gathering, hopefully off district property. But I believe the district is protected by ensuring that it's factual information when the request comes in and that you're asking for factual information and you're getting factual information. I would not suggest, for example, that in your question to the superintendent, it starts with, "I support the bonds. I think everybody should support the bonds and in that regard, please provide the following information." Because as you know, we repeat that question as a general rule and we would not repeat that question, nor could we provide information even of a factual nature to that question because of the appearance. Even the appearance.
So, my concern is one of purpose or intent, because the purpose or the intent of asking for that information would be for advocacy.
Well, I'm not going to assume that, Dr. Mathias.
Got it.
And indeed, what I would recommend to all board members is that you do not ask questions of the superintendent or staff for advocacy purposes. Because if it even appears to be so and there is a complaint to the Texas Ethics Commission, then we'll be in a position to have to prove up that it was not and we don't want to go there.
That's what I want to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, there'll probably be situations that come up. If they do, please forward them to Mr. Waxler and he will be happy to answer them. And once again, this gets, can get pretty complicated, but it's pretty simple once you finally understand it. So, just follow the rules and we'll be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Waxler. Next item, Dr. Krasnoff.
Yes, we have some other guests that are going to join us in the front, but your next item for consideration is the work of our Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, known affectionately as the CBAC. They're going to present the preliminary scope of work for potential proposed bond for May 2013. Our tri-chairs are here. Lawrence Fryer is going to be here, our chief operations officer. If you don't know, Ramon de Jesus, please say hello. We have Albert Hawkins and Carolyn Merritt and looks like Paul Turner. My goodness, anybody, we're just going to keep going. How about we just turn it over to y'all and you get started? I think there's, we're out of space at the table. But welcome and we'll just turn it over to you to give you as much time as possible.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Krasnoff. And we are representing the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. We have a presentation we'd like to share with you regarding some of the deliberations and conclusions from our process. I'm not sure if it's advocacy or fact-based, but we're going to walk you through it anyway. And there's a, it's fact-based. It's a short presentation. We would like to, you know, share with you our proposed scope of work for proposed bond election for May of 2013. And if it's okay, I'd like to just start walking through the presentation and then take a few minutes to do that and come back around for any questions or specific items that you might like to discuss further. The first slide reflects the, some of the needs that were identified for a bond issue. And of course, at the front end of our process, there was a determination as to whether or not there was a need for a bond issue. That began actually with the Board of Trustees appointing a capital improvement bond planning advisory committee, which functioned for a couple of months and reviewed a good bit of data and got a high-level sense of what the needs were that the district needed to address and determined and recommended to the superintendent, who in turn recommended to the board, that a Citizens Bond Advisory Committee be appointed to develop a more specific and detailed scope of work. And so, that process has continued. Our, I think as our CBAC has gone through the data and analyzed a lot of quality information, we've identified some very strong and critical needs for a bond issue. And some of them are urgent and time-sensitive. And that slide just gives you a sense of some of the points of consideration that the CBAC identified. The next slide displays the committee membership. And as you can see, there's about 30 names there. The CBAC was, consists of parents of AISD students, community leaders and business leaders within AISD. These folks did come together a number of times and shared their knowledge, insight and expertise dealing in the areas of finance and education, real estate, environmental issues. So, we had a broad range and diverse array of skills and knowledge represented in the CBAC. Many of those members are here tonight and I'd like to just ask them to stand and be recognized. The next slide would display the charge given to the CBAC. And as you can see, it's quite extensive. It was developed through the, at the beginning of the process and it helped focus and guide our considerations and deliberations throughout the process. Our CBAC was quite active and quite involved. We met 16 times. I lost count, but I think the staff made sure we were signing in, but we met 16 times. That includes a four-day Saturday work session, two or three hours at a time. We were able also to receive a good deal of information from the public at each of those meetings. So, there was an opportunity at the top of the meeting for members of the public to share any comments with the CBAC. During the term of our process, we also had the opportunity to review individual campus plans. We solicited plans from each, each school campus and compared them to some of the data that had been collected by the staff and made sure that we, we got familiar with all the needs across all the schools in our district. The next slide kind of outlines some of the priorities that the CBAC identified. As we, as we worked our way through the data, recognizing that there were a lot of needs, we, we developed a priority process for ourselves and, and just ranking what we thought were the, the key needs across the district and that's what this slide reflects. At the top of the list, I think there was a, there was a strong feeling that the district needed to make sure that it addressed building infrastructure renovations for safety and functional equity. And those are the, those are the kinds of needs that don't always gain a lot of public attention. But when we look at our assets across the district, the CBAC felt it was critically important to make sure we maintain the, the capital assets of the district. Slide six gives a little bit more about the committee process. We received 52 presentations, reviewed the narratives and costs for each of the requests. As I indicated, we got public feedback at each meeting. We also took a look at, at how the, how the proposed projects or the requested projects aligned with the, with the district's strategic plan and the board priorities and also how, how they related to the priorities that the CBAC itself had established. Just a little bit more on public involvement is shown on slide seven. The CBAC did hold two public forums, one at Reagan High School and another one at Crockett High School. We, from those forums and from the website and other written comments that we got and our public comments, there were, there were 180 comments that were received and tabulated by the CBAC. And so, we feel that we, we provided a really strong and ample opportunity for the public to, to share with us some of their views about the needs across the school district. At this point, I'd like to pass it on to Carolyn, who will start presenting on page eight, slide eight.
The committees put our recommendations into slide eight, which basically shows the four proposed groupings. The committee made these recommendations based on the most current demographic data and alignment with the district's strategic plan and board priorities. The next few slides are going to illustrate the preliminary scope of work and detailed information on these items is included in exhibit E of the board agenda item. Under recommendations for Group One, it was health, environment, equipment and technology. There is a significant and clearly identified need to provide funding for technology in order to ensure equity throughout the district, to support the core and co-curricular areas of curriculum. Technology supports classrooms through mobile devices and other developmentally appropriate hardware. Under food services, there were significant renovations to kitchens to allow for compliance with health and safety codes and replacement of out-of-date furniture, fixtures and equipment across the district. We also included a section on, for funding of energy conservation initiatives, including unanticipated emergency repairs, which will enhance the goal of energy conservation and efficiency, as well as science lab casework and safety equipment. Another important component is the purchase of school buses, which will help to improve the environment by reducing emissions. The new buses will also enable the district to maintain a sound bus fleet with a sustainable bus replacement schedule.
I'm going to walk you through the recommendations in Group Two, which are safety, security, relief from overcrowded schools, new schools and new construction. Safety and security district-wide, which was something that we heard a lot about and took a lot of time in, in our discussions on the CBAC. Additions due to demographics at some of the schools that we have listed here. We also have additions due to individual campus requests, functional equity. So, there are some additions that are beyond the schools that we have listed on this particular slide. We have four new elementary schools that are under this recommendation, along with the land acquisition. We have the new South High School feasibility and design only as part of this recommendation. It does not include the land acquisition. That was voted on in the 2008 package. I believe there's already been some confusion on whether this land acquisition is related to the high school. It's only related to the elementary schools, not the high school. Individual campus plan requests, that was a huge monumental book that we got from all the campuses that even the ones that didn't turn them in when they were supposed to, we asked and the staff were very good at getting those campus plans so that we could see what they were requesting, what we could fit into this bond package and what we could begin to put on paper for a future bond package, hopefully that would continue to be a need at that campus if we weren't able to accomplish it at this particular junction. Fine arts additions at Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders and the athletic additions at Anderson High School were also part of this recommendation.
Group Three included the academic and building infrastructure renovations to safeguard the investments in our district. Those were the facility systemic repairs. They included individual campus plans, as well as functional equity and library and campus improvements.
The Group Four recommendations were academic initiatives and fine arts and athletics. These are some of the recommendations that came through the components of the administration's response to the board priorities that had to do with our AAFR process. These include the career and technology education, fine arts. Now, in fine arts, I want to add that in the 2004 and the 2008 package, we dedicated money to fine arts at that time. And so, this would be a continuum in this bond package to try to get as much of the whole district as we can. It's been a pretty long process in addressing our fine arts needs in this district. Physical education and athletics is another one under this recommendation. That was another one where we spent a lot of time and the physical education and the curriculum that we have in elementary, we really felt we needed to focus at the secondary level to give those students an opportunity when they go to middle and high school to continue those opportunities of being able to choose the health and sort of participation in sports. So, that's a sort of something that we really focused on, on, on the athletics. Special education, this one has to do with the AAFRs of Clifton and Rosedale, but I want to say that on special education, a lot of the money that we put into special education is either in the individual campus plans, it's integrated in systematic repairs. There's a lot of areas that special education is being addressed, not just in this particular recommendation. These are two recommendations for those specific AAFRs. And then the last is the school for young men.
This next slide is a summary of the bond proposal with the projected amounts for each grouping. Please note that these estimates do include escalation costs, design fees, inflation permit, inflation permit and contingency funds.
So, when you look at that total of 889.9 million, one element of our charge also was to, to assess the impact on taxpayers in the district. And so- And so, beginning on slide fourteen, we identified some information related to the tax impact. The proposed scope of work would increase the INS tax rate by about three-point-five cents. And you see in that slide the estimated impact on a $200,000 home being about $5.83 a month. The next slide gets a comparison of AISD with some of the surrounding districts. And this is for both the INS and the M&amp;O tax rate. The M&amp;O tax rate being in the blue and the INS tax rate being in the orange. And at the present time, projected for 2013, the AISD tax rate is $1.24. And you can see how that compares with the surrounding districts. The Interest and Sinking Fund tax rate is to sixteen-point-three cents. And so this proposed scope of work would add three, three-and-a-half cents to that.
We'd like to thank Chief Operations Officer Lawrence Friar and his staff for providing us with information, resources, and knowledge to assist us in our work as a committee. We'd also like to thank you, Superintendent Dr. Karsdorf and members of the Board of Trustees for your service to our community. We feel privileged as a community to play a role in helping to provide our students a world-class education in the years to come. And as was mentioned, the CBAC members have served over thirteen-hundred-and-fifty hours collectively. And we have also added some additional meetings to our schedule to continue, based on the direction you, as the board, would give us. And at this time, we would be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Panelists, thank you very, very much. Greatly appreciated. Tri-Chairs and members of the committee that are here this evening, thank you so much for all your work. I know it's been a tremendous number of hours, but your dedication and your commitment to this are greatly appreciated by this board and by this community. So thank you so much for that. And staff, once again, thank you for all your hard work. Board of members, just want to make sure that you understand two things with regard to this particular agenda item. In terms of the process, I think the superintendent summarized that this work has been ongoing now for, well, ever since May of last year. We're at a point in the process where the superintendent is looking for input from the board on the preliminary statement of work, so that if the committee needs to go back and do some tweaking or gather some additional information, this is a time to try to raise those sorts of questions and provide input to the committee. We are scheduled to talk about this item at least three more times in regular meetings. And we have a retreat scheduled where we will spend a significant amount of time dedicated to this. So we have a number of opportunities. Don't feel like if you don't ask your question tonight, it's going to be not, there will not be an opportunity for that. But try and think about the questions that you have so that those that may require some additional work by staff or require some input that you need in order for you to begin to answer the questions and ultimately make a decision about a bond at the end of February, when we were scheduled to vote on this, that you'll get your questions answered. So think about the sequence in which you need to have information provided to you. And so with those sort of preparatory comments, I will open it up for questions. Go ahead.
And just to your comments, that there are also two public hearings that are coming up, and those dates are January, I know the timeline's in here. January twenty-second and January twenty-ninth. Okay, both Mondays. No?
No, Tuesday.
Tuesdays and?
Twenty-second and then Monday.
And Monday, okay. But we really want people to come out and right after that, the board will have a meeting so that you can, it'll be on TV for people to be able to hear the discussion.
I'm sorry, let me add one other thing for the benefit of the November elected trustees. The process for carrying out a bond election requires a certain amount of notice to be given in advance of the actual date that the election is to be held. It's required by the Justice Department. And in order for us to comply with that requirement of the Justice Department, the order calling for the bond election absolutely has to be prepared or we have to vote on it no later than the first of March. In order to make sure that we don't push ourselves to that limit, we're going to be trying to take action on this particular item at the end of February. So just want to point that out, that there is a time constraint that we need to observe. And the reason for it is because of the Department of Justice. Okay, we will start our questions. Dr. Mathias.
Thank you, Tri-Chairs, Committee Members, all of you for your work, administration and staff. My question as trustee, as we as trustees are out in the community, we're interfacing with families and with community members, and we get input on this plan. Oh, we wish, we hope this bond includes X number of dollars for us to do this or that. What do you recommend for us as trustees to do as community members come to us with their hopes and dreams and wishes? How's that for a question? Superintendent?
Just, Mr. President, Trustee Mathias. What helps us a lot is if you collect those and don't make commitments, because just yet, but that you collect them and just send them to me as a superintendent. We have a very consistent process where as soon as we get information, I share it with the COO, who then sits down with the Tri-Chairs or goes to one of the meetings and shares it. But to send it like directly where we can't communicate that with everyone, ensure that that message gets through, it would be helpful if you sent it to us so we can make sure that all i's are dotted and t's crossed on relaying the information. But, and y'all may have other things that you want to share too, but they-
I would just add that many of the things you might get asked about is really at a detailed level. And so the staff would have access to what is recommended from the Facility Condition Index, which is a detailed tracking of some of the repair needs across the district. They would also have access to what is included from the individual campus plans. And so you're likely to get asked about specific things that might take, you know, looking through one of those documents to really get an answer to.
And one more thing to add, excuse me, is that we have added three more meetings for the CBAC. So they will be extending on up through February. So as Dr. Karsdorf said, you know, once we get that information, we'll be able to put it back in front of the CBAC.
Good.
And the hope is that basically after the 2004 bond election, a database was created, which basically gave, all in one spot, the Facility Condition Index. So now we have a much better grasp of what's going on on individual campuses. Plus, we added the component of staff going out and not only making a request to individual campuses for their individual campus plans, which was given to them over the summer, but in addition, through the fall, all the way up until, I believe, the end of October, those campuses that had not submitted that by the start of the school year, staff went out to those campuses and worked with those campuses to make sure if there were things that the database had missed that were not where they needed to be on their campus, either from an academic need or from a functional equity need, those were incorporated. And so we're hoping that we've really caught most of those things through our communications with the individual campuses.
Functional equity, is that something that we could define? Is that defined in any of the documents that we, I'm sure that it is, okay, good. Second of three questions, or Mr. DeJesus, please.
Yeah, I just want to say that on the campus individual plans, it's something that really needs to be applauded, not only the efforts of the district, but you should read those. Because if you talk about community, parent, community engagement, that's at its best. Those are the people that are there at the campus and know what's going on and had a process in order to bring a lot of those things forward. It is a huge document, and I would say that it would really show what some of the campuses are thinking as what their needs are. They can all be addressed in this bond, but we now have at least another layer of being able to look at it in the future to see if we're going to be able to continue either by M&amp;O money or by a future bond.
Good. My second of three questions simply had to do with community engagement. I think you may have answered that, Mr. DeJesus, when you say it was community engagement at its best. Different communities have different expectations with respect to community input and feedback. I would simply want to make sure that Austinites, as Austinites, we enjoy giving feedback on these projects. What I'm hearing is that you feel comfortable with the amount of feedback that has been received as a committee.
Well, we're never comfortable enough. And I read your mind, by the way, before I said that. But I think that now comes the next layer of community involvement. Now we have something on paper, and now we'll be able to get some reactions. What is it that we really want to kind of focus in on? Is everybody sort of working towards the same goal? And so we still now have another layer of community involvement that we need to be just as vigilant about.
And my final question simply has to do with the fact that in November, we voted for a medical school here in Austin. And I've had offline conversations, but for the sake of audience members and those who are listening, are there funds included in this for some effort that relates to that medical school?
We do, and that is in the Career and Technology component on the Recommendation Number Four. There is some support for the new program associated with the UT Medical School, some also for the IT Program Growth, support for the ACC Engineering Program. And those are three of the programs that the Career and Technology dollars are really going to be focused on.
Good, thank you.
Dr. Sarf?
And I would just like to say, if I remember correctly, at least some estimation for the original conversations regarding that were around $6 million for the medical school piece. But, you know, not that anyone, I mean, we're still, I mean, they're still figuring things out. But we know, I mean, we just, we know, we can barely renovate a school for $6 million. So if you looked at any conceivable site, and if it was any contribution we're making for an addition to something that exists, whether it's a hospital or a university or something tied with that design, that there's, it just seems like that number is far too low for what would be probably expected for a contribution. And you're in my work, two of you are in my work group. So you know what, you know, it costs to be in partnership with something like ACC or any design where we're building new, that would be like a high school. Six million just seems really low. So I would, I would just encourage us to either get more details about potential designs, but I can't see where it would be, knowing how much it costs to have a high school, understanding it's not going to be comprehensive, you're still talking about tens of millions of dollars, not six. So if we could, I'll talk to our Chief Academic Officer. We'll try to find ways to get more information. But it seems like we would need to do maybe double or triple the number that I saw in the six million details.
Yes, sir.
Board members, Dr. Mathias, so regarding functional equity. Functional equity is you have an educational specification for a high school, middle school, and elementary school. And so that's looking at deficiencies against that baseline. And then you try to remedy that deficiency by addressing it as a matter of functional equity.
Good. I appreciate that explanation for our sake.
Okay, and Dr. Mathias, let me emphasize process here. One of the things that's important that we respect, if you have a question of someone wanting something added to the bond, they have gone through, the committee has gone through an extensive process to take into account a number of ways to address the needs on a campus. And so in order to be fair to the entire community, it is important that you, if you have, certainly, we want to make sure nothing gets left out. But more than likely, from what I have seen, this work, the committee's work, and having chaired this sort of a committee, they've gone far and beyond any of the committees that I've been on. And the campus plan has been the real coup de grace that they have added this year that we did not have the luxury of adding when I was a chair. And so it is important that you do submit the information to the superintendent. They will then go back and see if they haven't already vetted it and how it may have ranked or what information they received from that particular item and why it may have already made the cut. But it's buried in the nomenclature because a lot of things have been grouped together. But they can then unpack it for you and tell you where it is and exactly how much. So process is one thing I want to underscore, that these folks have really done an excellent job at. And we want to continue to respect that process as we raise questions about items in the bond. Ms. Moya.
Thank you. As far as the, thank you all for your work and committee members. Y'all did yeoman's work, and I was on the 2004 Community Bond Oversight Committee. So I didn't have the pleasure of planning one, but I certainly know what's involved. And thank you all very much. You did some amazing work. In tonight's packet, trustees, there's a CD that's per my request, because I can't see as good as the rest of you, apparently. And so I couldn't see all those little bitty figures and numbers. So there's a CD that has the summary by group, the individual campus plan and departmental request summaries, and the 2013 bond request proposed allocation by campus, other facilities and district-wide subcategories. So I don't know if that's going to provide some of the information, Jamie, that you were talking about. But you might want to, I mean, I would suggest that we look at that. That way, you know, when we are asked questions, we at least have a general idea of what was included and, you know, things like that. But I do agree with Mr. Torres that, you know, we do need to follow the process because there are reasons why things are included and why things aren't. And one parent's desire may not be the desire of the Campus Advisory Council, you know. So, you know, those are the kind of things to keep in mind. I'm not sure if today's meeting is the appropriate time to ask specific questions about the scope of work or the groups specifically for more detail. Keep in mind, I didn't read all that little bitty print because I can't see that well. So this may be in there, but I don't know. For example, on Group Two, when we talk about the New South High School feasibility and design only, it's $8 million. Feasibility for what? I mean, we know we're going to do one, so what are we talking about here? And I'm, maybe I just don't have a concept of scale, but I don't understand how those two items could cost $8 million.
Well, as you know, there's a planning team that's made up of community members that's looking at the programming for the New South High School. And once that planning team gets through with their work, they're going to recommend to the superintendent, which will then begin the process of land purchase through the boards, through the board process, and then utilizing the funds from the 2008 bond package to complete this. And from that will be a preliminary scope of work. They're going to kind of determine what kind of high school or recommend what kind of high school this might be, whether it's a specialty school, you know, many things that the planning committee is still working on.
Right, I get that. I'm just surprised that these two particular items would cost that much money. That's just, it just surprised me. So I'm not, I'm not sure what we mean by feasibility. And I know what design means, you know, but I'm not sure what we mean by feasibility. Is feasibility that, do we need the high school? I think we've determined that we do.
No, that's not what the-
So that's why I don't understand.
Could I ask you, Gary, is it?
Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff. Could I ask you to give us a Architectural Design 101 and provide, Ms. Moya, where this particular component fits in the scheme of building anything? So that, because I think that's where the misunderstanding is.
Yeah, the preliminary design and feasibility, that's going to be, as part of the due diligence to buy the piece of land, you're going to do some preliminary environmental, very preliminary environmentals, make sure everything's clean. Once you've bought the land, then you have to go through the preliminary civil engineering, have the preliminary talks with the city, do some preliminary floor plans after you've got the program. And all of that type of information, as well as any kind of testing you might have to do. You're going to have to do some testing of the land, the soils, doing some early environmental studies. All that's what adds up to about the eight million. And what we normally do is we've got a percentage of the overall construction cost, and that's what we use as kind of an earmark, is the percentage of the construction cost. And that's where we came up with the eight million.
Okay, well, that's real helpful. Thank you. Are we presuming that what- Are we presuming that what we're going to be working with is raw land? Because if we are, then I'm going to be very disappointed, because I wonder, would we be doing, would it cost this much if we were acquiring existing vacant buildings and planning to retrofit to do specialized campuses, maybe one or more than one? Would we be doing the same types of things?
We would be doing different things, but this money is based on greenfield construction.
Greenfield construction, meaning...
Being new site.
Meaning a new site. Okay. Is that because that's the most expensive? And that's why we're planning for it? It's the highest dollar amount? Because I'm just trying to understand, because what I don't want us to do is to put ourselves in a box, that all we're talking about is brand-new construction, because the decision on that has not been made. And I find it, it troubles me that we may be leading community down a path that, at least for me, you know, I, you know, I'm not in favor of brand-new construction of a comprehensive high school. So, you know, what I would like to see for South Austin is something completely different. So I'm concerned that what we're doing here is we're putting ourselves in a box without really giving the community members and the board to have a true dialogue, a real dialogue about what's actually needed, not only for South Austin, but for AISD and the City of Austin, and job growth and job development.
Ms. Moya, can I, let me just clarify something. Once again, I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Kaufman, but as an engineer, what you do is you set a budget, and what we don't want to do is put ourselves in a box the other way.
Right.
And then say, okay, well, we had assumed that we would do renovation of an existing facility, and we only budgeted $4 million. Now what do you do?
Right. No, I understand that.
So this is the better way to do it, so that you know you have enough money. If they don't spend it, it just doesn't get spent. It, there's, and so this is not a presumption of anything other than making sure we have enough money, regardless of which way the community goes. And part of feasibility in this particular case is trying to determine whatever the programming, the needs of the community determine, is to see if it'll work. And oftentimes, with an existing site, you may do a feasibility study and then end up realizing it doesn't work, and you may have to do it twice. And so it may end up that you'll spend the same amount of money anyway, doing it either way. So I think this is the wise way to do it, so that even if we did what you're suggesting, that generally doesn't happen right the first time, and you end up having to do it twice.
No, no, I get that. I just, and so what I guess what I was trying to say, without phrasing it very well, was, you know, are we planning for the highest expenditure that we might have to spend, rather than going for middle, you know, middle of the road to the lower part, and then find ourselves in a pinch where we don't have enough money? That's, and that's fine. I totally agree with that. But what, the other part of my concern is that when we explain to folks what we're talking about here, that's when I, where I don't want us to put ourselves in a box.
Sure.
You know, I want us, I mean, I want the box to have an open lid and say, you know, these are the options. It's not this or this. It could be any combination of these things, you know, because I don't want us to be in a box, because we, as a board, haven't had a chance to really benefit from, you know, the conversations that the planning teams made in quite some time, you know. So that was the one question. And the other question I had, because you know me, I'm big on athletics, is the athletics addition at Anderson, I found some detail that it's a gym. What is the condition of Anderson's gym at this time, and what are we trying to do there?
This is a new competitive gym.
New competitive gym?
Right.
Okay, what does that mean?
Associated locker rooms, concession, so it's a new facility, in addition to what we have there right now.
Okay. And what does that do for equity across the district with other high schools? Are we, are we setting a new bar for the rest of the high schools? Are we trying to bring Anderson up to what other high schools have? What are we doing?
It's our understanding that we're build, we are bringing Anderson up to what the other high schools have, that it is way undersized and overused, and just beat up because of its overuse.
Okay. All right. So...
So, Trustee Moya, it is an equity issue?
Yes, got that part. So when we did our going around to the high schools and looking at things, did we look at all the high schools for whether or not they have concession facilities?
That work was done by the athletic facility...
Okay.
...community. So there was a special committee that I don't believe we have any representation here tonight, but they have come and given us at least two presentations. But basically, it was based on their work, and they stressed to us that they did look at it from a district-wide perspective, and those were the recommendations that they came forward with, and we honored their work in putting it in, in the way they requested. Though we did, I will, I will stress that we did actually send them back a few times to get clarification for specifics like that. So we didn't just take their recommendation. We had additional questions, and they went back and gave us additional, they fine-tuned it for us, and gave us the additional information that we requested.
Well, if it's appropriate, I'd be interested to see what the, what that subcommittee, or that ad hoc committee, whatever we called it, proposed, because, you know, in my memory of some of the facilities that I've been to, I don't think they all have concessions, for example. And so, you know, I'm just curious to, just to, for my own, for my own benefit. And then I'll yield at this time, because I really want to see the actual campus detail before I go into it much further, and I'll just reserve that information for another meeting.
Dr. Sarf, did you want to add something?
Yes, and first, I just wanted to remind the board, you do have the individual campus detail, I think it was provided around, I don't care, whatever, and we need to get you a magnifying glass. I know. Yeah. And then, but also, just to the whole gym piece, like, we know that LBJ, for example, does not have two gyms, but they've got two schools, and, you know, and the usage is by both of the schools at the campus. But if we're talking about the equity on these gym things, at least from what I saw, it is not clear to me that we have painstakingly kind of gone through that. I just haven't seen it where it's a clear crosswalk, and that, you know, every school, while they may or may not have proposed it themselves, where we know we need to improve that, we need to do that. And I just haven't been able to see that. And I know you and I talked before, but I just didn't even get a chance to connect with you today. But can we at least check LBJ again? I talked to you after my student advisory group, and the kids are talking about it. So I think that one definitely needs to be reviewed. And then I had a question, and perhaps, I think, Mr. Hawkins, you may have talked about this before, but I cannot remember if it was you, maybe Nicole Conley-Apron, but it's on that slide 29, about the tax and financial impact. I've heard multiple times now, but I want to make sure that I understand it and get it right as I educate people and not advocate. If you are a homeowner who's over 65, there's some, people have said multiple times that you're, that means, we're here where it says, on a $2,000 home, it'll increase by X amount of dollars. I've been told that for certain groups of the citizenry or residency, it will not increase. Can someone explain that exactly how and why theirs doesn't increase?
There is a, there is a tax freeze that applies for school property taxes, and I probably shouldn't go into too much detail with Moke and Casey back there, because they, they'll correct me on it. But once a person qualifies for it, their school taxes are frozen at that level assessed. Yeah, I believe it is 65.
Is that it? Is it the 65 age? And that is the qualifier?
And that is the qualifier. And so even though your tax rate may go up, I understand that their tax rate is frozen, so they don't, they don't pay anymore.
Yeah, so I would, I would just say for future presentation on all this, if there are anomalies that would help educate people, so they understand some of those things, I would find that, perhaps if I were over 65, a pretty interesting data point that I would want to know, perhaps before an election.
Yes. And that actually is the reason for the tax freeze.
And then, and then on slide 30, I know this, I don't think this is done in any, yeah, any, so it is official that AISD has the next-to-last...
Next-to-lowest.
I mean, next-to-lowest, as I meant, next-to-lowest tax rate.
And that is based on information that your staff has collected?
Right.
And it is subject to change as districts may adjust their...
And our CFO has verified this, right? And so also, just on any of the slides that have, you know, out of consideration for people who don't agonize over AISD tax rates and things of that sort, it just seems to me that on each slide like this, what is the takeaway? I mean, we're showing a visual about data. What is it that we want people to know? And in other words, we write in narrative for those who don't, you know, get excited about having to analyze bar charts. And I think that would also just help keep the data points clean about what we, why we would show this, and why this would be important as we try to educate the public.
That's a good point. I want to address something that Ms. Moya asked, and that is, in our presentation, because we didn't want to take all night here, we sort of just gave the highlights, but if you go back and look at the details, every gym in this district at our high schools is being addressed through this bond package. That's, all 11 gyms are being addressed, including Ann Richards. So that everybody is getting something through this bond package on many components. We just gave you a highlight just to kind of capture what we're trying to present tonight.
Right. I know, and that's why I was saying, I wanted to go back and look at the detail on that disc, that CD, so that I could, so that I would be better informed. Thank you. But I did have a follow-up to what Dr. Kostarfen was saying. On the over-65 exemption, I don't know if that applies to whether or not you have a homestead exemption on the property or not. If it, if it only, if it's only frozen because you're over 65 and you have a homestead exemption, it's important to clarify that, because if you're over 65 and you own a property without a homestead exemption, then you may not be frozen.
I think that's right. It does apply to your homestead.
Right. So that's, so if we're going to put some detail, those are the kind of details that we want to include, I would think. And also, to add to the narrative you were talking about, you know, we went a very long period of time without increasing our INS. So I think it's important that we remind folks that we went for, I don't know how many years it was, Nicole, I don't know if you, if you know off the top of your head, but, but say, a good six or seven years, or something like that, where we did not increase the INS, and we continued with our bonding and building and doing all of that without increasing at all. And we finally had to do that a couple of years ago, or a year ago. And so that's important for people to know, because, you know, when you, you have people, you know, moaning and groaning about the tax rate, because it's AISD, or the city, excuse me, the school district tax dollar amount of your property tax bill is the biggest one, you know, they don't, it helps us to tell our story very plainly about what we've done, not done, how we've not raised our rate, et cetera. Those are important, important data points for people to have. Thank you.
Our INS, INS takes, paid flat for six years, six years.
Okay. Ms. Bradley, Mr. Snyder, and then Ms. Sparksdale.
Well, actually, I'll be really quick, because Dr. Kostarfen actually spoke on what it was I was going to ask about, which, when we're talking about the equity issue as it related to the gyms at the high school, I was going to actually bring up that she was approached by students, I've been approached by parents, and LBJ has one gym, no concession. And since I do have the disc, I will look to see exactly what was part of their plan. But I would like for us to go back and relook at that particular issue. Told you to be quick.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder, and then Ms. Sparksdale.
First of all, thank you very much. Try and be gentle in my questions, and I really do appreciate the work that you folks have asked, have done here. I know that I've talked with multiple, multiple members of the committee individually numerous times. I'm sure I will do so again in the future. Even attended very, very briefly a couple of your meetings, so know the effort that went into it. Before we stray from the conversation about the gyms, I appreciate the remarks of both Dr. Kostarfen and Ms. Bradley. I mean, Ms. Bradley, they do have a concession stamp. My wife was running part of it out of the coach's office last week sometime. So it's, yeah, sort of functions that way, but, you know, compared to what other schools have, it's not the same.
So does the, I was going to say, so does the hall by the fine arts dance studio.
Right, right, down there, too. Yeah, so. And, you know, one of my daughters plays basketball, and so I have the opportunity to go to many of the gyms in the district. And to think that the Anderson Gym needs to be replaced because it's not up to standards, and then go to a place like Crockett or Lanier, Travis is another one that's right up there, too. I mean, it's just, I kind of wonder what's going on at Anderson, and would like to really get a good hold on it, but, you know, Ramona, you may be right.
We're welcome to find any time.
Ramona, you may be right that every athletic facility in the district is getting something. Now, whether that something actually brings them up to a state of equity, and whether it meets their full needs, it's going to be an interesting topic to have a conversation about at some point, so. I've got a lot of questions, and I'm not going to ask them all here tonight. I'll send a lot of them to the superintendent, and I'm sure you guys will be made aware of them at some point. The couple of things stand out to me about this I'd like to talk about tonight. The first one is just the number. I mean, you know, I've been doing things with this district from the '96 bond that Mr. Waxler was working with on Ford, and, you know, this is a big, big number. And I'm still basically at a place that I was when we started talking about this bond, what, last spring, was it? Something like that? Where, you know, if we need to look at things that, you know, fix HVACs, the roofs, windows, doors, that kind of thing, I'm there. I mean, we need to keep things working where kids can get in and do what they need to do with the buildings. But absent some kind of long-range plan as to how we're actually going to upgrade our facilities and make best use of them, make sure they're secure, where we don't have incidents that happen, I'm really struggling to get to that other two-thirds of the bond money that we're talking about. And, you know, I look at our facilities, and like on page three, Exhibit B of the scope, you list individual schools that are pegged for additions. And looking at this list, the ages of the school are 39 years, three years, seven years, 44, 46, 52, 43. So we can add on things, we can put new paint on, we can fix the roofs, we can do all kinds of things, but you're still left with a 40-year, 50-year-old building. And it's hard for me to visualize how much longer we can do that. I know that we've worked towards a facility master plan, we've worked towards looking at our facility's conditions, but I think everyone here is aware of what happened when we gathered, a long discussion about that. When I look at the ages of our schools, the average elementary school was built in 1967, middle school, 72, high school, 66. And that's with two relatively new high schools, Aikens in '01, '02, something like that, and Bowie in '88, I believe it was. So we're talking about a plant that is very old, basically. And I'm not sure that continuing to put these new additions, the new nice things that we like to make it look nicer, or might meet somewhat similar things that other schools might have, is the best way to be spending the kind of money that we're talking about The other thing that I'm very concerned about... The other thing that I'm very concerned about is just the amount of the bond. And one of your slides towards the end, you talk about five dollars a month, six dollars a month, something like that, for the average two thousand, or two-hundred-thousand-dollar house. But what doesn't come out is what that is combined with everybody else that's increasing taxes, increasing fees, what that burden is going to be on the people that are actually paying those taxes out in the real world. At our joint subcommittee meeting that we had here back in June, what was it? One of the data points that came out was that if all the proposed bonds that were passed by all the governmental entities, whether it's city, county, whatever, health district, you know, and the fees went up along with, you know, water, power, what the city was planning on doing, there would be a fifteen-hundred-dollar increase at the end of that five-year period in what people are paying for taxes. And fifteen-hundred dollars on top of the taxes that we're paying now for that average two-hundred-thousand-dollar home is going to be a fair chunk of money. I mean, haven't figured out exactly, but we're talking probably a fifteen or twenty percent increase in taxes and fees for what most folks are paying right now. So, I'm not real, I mean, I'd like to see, talk about other groupings, the, the way this is laid out, and there was, you know, possible propositions that are tied to this in various ways. I'd like to talk about it, just so that we can have a little bit more, what I would think of as a reasoned grouping of things. There are some things on here, particularly in Group Four, that I think maybe ought to be broken out a little bit further in terms of not grouping them all into one possible proposition, or one possible phase of the bond, but splitting it out into some way to give folks a little bit more choice on actually how they want to increase things. One of the things that you guys could provide that would be a very easy, specific request, and I did get the CD from, that Ms. Moya requested, and actually put it on my little laptop here. But one of the concerns that I heard through the process and from talking with individual campuses, was just the whole campus improvement, individual campus improvement plans. And I know that even as late as, late October, November, you guys didn't actually have all those in hand where you reviewed them. Talking to campuses, they weren't really clear what they could ask for, what they would, you know, possibly be something they could try and get in their, in individual plans. So, just some kind of sanity check on the one that was presented, and I'll pick on two campuses just to give you extremes, but, you know, if Anderson did theirs one way, or McAllen did theirs one way, and, you know, Travis, or Bowie, or Crockett did theirs on another way, you know, what, what's the correlation? How, how is there a check made to make sure that both sets of campuses were aware that, you know, they could request certain things, that they're, that fits what their needs are, that it's a sound campus plan? In other words, we don't have, you know, one campus asking for a new forty-million-dollar fine arts facility, or, you know, versus another one that's talking about, you know, redoing the stage four, is an example. So, just something that, you know, if you could provide any information there that you already have, would be helpful to me.
On the, specifically on the athletic and the fine arts piece, because there were the district-wide AAFRs for fine arts and athletics, a lot of those individual campus plans did not have a fine arts request, because they had already been told by the larger committee, these are the things that we're asking for, these are the things that we put as the higher priorities. So in that case, the campus may not have asked for it, because they'd already committed, communicated with the fine arts group, the committee, or the athletics committee regarding the needs of that specific campus.
Okay. And in systematic repairs, you may have some campus plans that are asking for some systematic repairs that were already integrated and proposed by the district. So we kind of have a little bit of, a little bit of overlap on those issues. But what I will say is that we didn't expect us to get it one-hundred percent or perfect this time, but what we can expect is, we've gotten now at least something to move forward with, where the next bond package, we should be able to sort of ease into it a little bit easier, because we have years of data that have been coming through our campus process. So this is really a starting point. And I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to address the most needs of academic and those sort of systematic repairs that we really needed to address for functional equity, or for the campuses on, on, through that process.
And Trustee Snyder, just to make sure we didn't get wish lists and, and react to that, part of the process was using the ed specs as a baseline, and the standard check was with the associate superintendents. So that was a way to cross-reference.
And, and Ms. Frye, just to be clear, I mean, yes, the wish list part is a, you know, component of something that kind of raised a red flag with me. But I'm equally concerned about the other end of the spectrum where, you know, one school is requesting everything that would give them up to ed specs, and, you know, for whatever reason, the CAC, or whatever at the other campus, you know, they're not even aware and understanding that they can go out and, and do certain things. So, it's making sure that everyone is equally aware of what, what they can do, is what it comes down to. I'll, I'll close with this for right now at least. I've got some other things I'd like to talk about, but we can hold that for a little while. One of the concerns that I've got is just strictly timing on a bond, and I'd like to find out what your discussion was about it. Because, I mean, we're talking about multiple pots of money that the district needs to grow in some way, whether it's, you know, bond money to go out and take care of facilities, or build new facilities, or, or do other things. But we also have to look at our maintenance and operation money that we're going to be using to pay for programs, or pay, you know, pay raises for teachers, or that kind of thing. And it seems to me a particularly challenging aspect of the conversation, in that if we do one, we may not be able to do the other, what, you know, regardless of which one it is, whether we do a bond first and then go for, for a TRE, or do a TRE first and then go for a bond. And I'd like to find out if, as a committee, you had that conversation, and what your thoughts were as to whether, you know, one was deemed to be, you know, more urgent for whatever reason, not to cast favoritism upon either aspect of it. But, you know, I would like to find out what input you might be able to provide as to how that was considered.
Well, we did have that conversation, and part of the issue becomes that we're also looking at a timeline for the exact reason that you just described, that the entities sort of beating us to the punch, because ACC, the county, everybody wants to also go for a bond package, and it would be not very wise for us to go for a bond package at the same time they are. Our windows to do that are very limited. So that was one of the discussions. The other issue becomes that if, if we don't utilize this window of opportunity now, our needs are just going to continue to grow, and it may have to be a request for even a larger bond package in the future. Keep in mind, the reason this bond package is as large as it is, is because when we did the bond package in two thousand and four, that was supposed to be a little stop-gap measure, and we knew a big one was coming. This should be of no surprise. We told our electorate, we had much discussion about, we're going to do a small gap, stop-gap bond package in two thousand and four, with the future one coming. The future one that we're now facing has really been extended by longer than we originally had anticipated. A lot of those systematic repairs are going to begin to cost us from M and O money, and that's going to really hurt us if we don't consider maybe moving on this at this window of opportunity that we have now. But we have had discussions on this particular issue as a committee, and we'll continue to have discussions.
Thank you, guys.
And, and Mr. Snyder and trustees of the board, y'all know that we've had this discussion extensively about the timing of a tax ratification election in particular. So in addition to what Mr. De Jesus has said, we, we know that for, for the tax ratification election, first, we have a legislative session, then we're in the middle of a lawsuit, right? We're pretty certain that no matter what the decision is, it's going to be appealed, and I'm sure Moke and Casey can talk about all that stuff too, but that, you know, under no circumstances, under the timeline that we have for a May twenty thirteen consideration, do we think that it would be at all prudent to put the burden of a potential tax ratification election on the taxpayers first without having those answers? And this board talked about that, and that is in large part why we knew that that had to come later, and when it's appropriate to consider it, before we make any decisions about, about, you know, doing a TRE. I know that the CFO has a good sense of, there is a minimum that we probably need to consider, but how much more, and to what extent, we want to push the remaining pennies that we have. I mean, that's something that will require other things to play out before we can consider it. So we discussed that at this table, and, and in addition to sitting on that joint subcommittee and having all the CFOs present to all of the taxing entities their analysis regarding where everyone might be over time, over years, it became very clear that, that if, if it was at all possible for AISD, especially after this recent fall, to be able to, you know, be on the ballot and, and not be in competition with a lot of other things that may be considered, it would be best for the district, especially considering what, what we had done as a stop-gap measure in earlier elections. So, I know that we've talked about that, and, and we've presented that, and, and that's been reinforced by the other taxing entities too.
Ms. Barksdale, then Ms. Inahosa, and then we're probably going to draw this to a close until next time, but.
Thank you all for your work. I know this is a great deal of work you've done over, over a long period of time, and meetings and weekends, so thank you very much for that. I think my question's for the superintendent, Mr. President. Is there a way we can load this data with any potential recurring costs and when they might hit? For example, I mean, I know, because many of this is just fixing schools and upgrading buildings and additions, so there's no new costs to, like, our M and O side of things. But there's a new school, or a new facility proposal, or wire operating costs for us, can we just kind of see those things lined up?
Yes. Mr. President, trustees of the board, as you know, that's part of our retreat agenda in January, on that Saturday, so our CFO has provided, you know, working draft, you know, documents
Okay.
before, and so, we, so we, we will, we will finalize those in time for your retreat so that you can start kind of getting a sense of pace against, you know, one-time cost and, and things that have legs to it, especially programmatic things. So, you open a school, it's got legs, you know, you, you add an addition to an existing school, that's a whole difference, much shorter stack of legs. But, but we have, we've, we've, you know, we've been working on that for some months and continue to track it, but we'll have something to the best, still draft, but will be finalized to the best of our ability. It'll show, we're going to go at about five years, right, or is it ten, Nicole? It was five? Five years. It'll have M and O, it'll have INS, and it'll show even our baseline deficit, our AAFRs, it'll show the, some, a line item for some of the inefficiencies of some of the decisions that we've made as a community philosophically about small schools, or things of that sort, but we're going to have all those laid out and have had working draft documents.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm sorry to remember seeing it before, if I've just
We haven't presented it, but, you know, we have those.
Remember specifically, but thank you.
Ms. Inahosa. Don't worry about the timekeeper.
Okay. I have a question, and I've raised these issues at our, at our last officers' meeting, and just in light of recent events in Newtown, and, and security issues that have, are now of greater concern to many in our community, I wonder how, I read an article in the Statesman about principals potentially asking for more things, for more security fixes for their campuses, in light of, in light of events there, and that the district is reevaluating security issues for our campuses. So, I have some, I mean, one issue that's been raised is portables, and I know some trustees of this board have expressed wanting to try to chip away at, at having, at some of our, we have, I understand, like, a third of our kids in portables in the district, and how, how can we begin to build permanent buildings? And so I'm curious about what percentage of our portables are we addressing with this bond? I don't know if we have those numbers now.
We should, right now.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Trustee Inahosa, regarding the portables, so, we're addressing sixteen percent of the portables.
Okay.
So we will be replacing one hundred and ninety-three classrooms.
Wow, that's great.
With these proposed additions and the new construction.
Okay. And, and those classrooms are already identified? We know where we're putting them?
Yeah, we know where the portables are that they're going to be replacing.
Yes.
So, yes, we do know that. Now, those portals may be moved to support some other need, but
Right.
that's what we'll be reducing by, according to the proposal.
Is it on the disc?
No, it's not on the disc, but we can provide that through the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. And then, are we also taking into account more recent requests, or have there been more recent requests by campuses for some security increases that might be, that might, could be addressed potentially in this bond?
Yes, there have, and we've discussed that with the CBAC, but the approach that we're going to take because of the immediacy of it, and the fact that we have a budget line in the two thousand and four bond, where we just increase the scope for security, and that would take care of front door monitors and cameras, and entry into portables, et cetera.
Excellent.
So that's the approach that we are, we're going to use for that.
That's great. I really appreciate knowing that, and I, I know lots of moms and dads in the district do as well. One of the things that I, grandparents, one thing specifically, and this is just anecdote, really, but that's come to my attention, is there are some campuses where they might have the cameras out on, on the front entrance door, but they don't have a monitor that shows them who's at that door. So they may be able to access that picture on a computer, but because those computers are scarce resources and everybody's using them, that it, it would be nice to have, to have the, something dedicated just to, for that purpose.
Right, and so, I'm just, and we've, I mean, especially since, you know, the recent tragic events, I mean, we've, every principal is working with their associates to talk specifically about what might be the limitations of their school. I mean, the way our schools were built, and this is also Texas, so it's nice, beautiful weather by and large, just a lot of doors and things open to the outside, depending on the time they were built, there were styles that were more popular in the seventies and sixties that we would never do, you know, reinvent today. But, but because each site is so different, we, you, this is a school-by-school walkthrough. This thing about the computer monitors and everything, I mean, you know, principals have been talking to us about that over the last couple of months explicitly. But we also, which is what I don't think I heard you say, unless I missed it, did you, but we are also using some of our contingency funds to take care of some of these small things as well, that we can, you know, kind of pick up quickly and, and address immediately because of some of the unique needs of the schools. Did I understand you correctly when we met the other day?
Yes, and I, I said two thousand and four bond, I didn't say contingency, but it's two thousand and four bond contingency.
Okay, great.
And it already has a budget line there, so just a matter of increasing.
I'm going to be sure we said that.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Well, thank you.
Okay, we're going to draw this, oh, I'm sorry. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I want to add that safety and security is something that's been ongoing now in this district, as a parent, for many years. We have our own police department, we installed monitors a long time ago, so I want parents to know that what we would be doing in this bond package, package is enhancing what we already have begun for many years. I think as a parent, I felt very secure, we have our own police department in this district. Not very many people do that, so I just want to make it very clear to the public that this package this package proposing enhancing what we already have that's way in advance of other districts.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mr. De Jesus.
And, and remember, for what you're talking about, we're talking about the capital improvements, right?
Right.
Tonight, we haven't talked at all about the M&amp;O side of the improvements, but our police chief and Lawrence Farrar, now we've already met about, you'll see it on the other side when Nicole does her presentations about the preliminary budget and things of that sort, that we are, you know, increasing capacity, especially elementary schools. We also know, and I'll just have to say it and I won't belabor it because I know this is a CBAC conversation, but, you know, we, we pay our officers, I think, the lowest, right, in the whole region.
And high turnover.
And we have high, we have the highest turnover in large part because of that. And so, those are other things that we're talking about, you know, improving and adjusting, but you'll never see that as part of this conversation, but it is part of the M&amp;O conversation. So, we're increasing here and also making recommendations on the other side.
Ms. Teich.
Just wanted, excuse me, to say thank you, having participated from the school end on the 2004 bond packaging and that kind of thing. I know how many hours it took us just to decide what we needed. I, I can't fathom how many hours it took you all to look at everything and all the work and the time and then the back and forth, so thank you very much. To all of you, the tri-chairs in the committee, thank you.
With that segue, I just want to thank you. I, sometimes the tone of the conversations, questions asked by trustees don't reflect the appreciation for the really hard work that you guys do because, you know, you give up your time, you give up a lot of hours trying to review this, and sometimes the tone of the questions don't reflect that. I just want to tell you that we really do appreciate that. It is important that you continue to do this work and that we continue to be able to impose on our citizens to help us in gathering input so that we are grounded in our decisions that we make. The other one, I just want to talk about two things. One is timing. You know, if we talk about having a bond, the reality of it is, we can only do it once or twice in the year effectively, it may be another time, but it's either in the spring or the fall. If we, if we had, if we flipped it, we couldn't do a TRE in the spring because with the legislature, and you're going to hear some folks talk to us about that, that would really be premature to consider a TRE in the spring while the legislature is going, but not know exactly what they're going to do. So, logically, you would want to have the TRE in the fall of the two, after you have the input from the legislature informing you as to what they've decided to do and just how bad you may end up. So, timing-wise, if we're going to do it in this calendar year, and I think Mr. De Jesus hit the nail on the head, the longer we put this off, that number's going to continue to go up. So, timing-wise, the spring makes the most sense of the options that we really have, and that's important. Cost is relative. Ms. Conley Abrams, do you remember what the tax increase was for the 2004 bond?
4.6.
How many?
It's like four and a half pennies.
That's what, that's what I seem to remember. I should have it etched on my forehead. But the reality of it is, at that point in time, four and a half cents only bought us half a billion dollars. Right now, we're going down a penny and we're getting almost twice as much. So, we need to realize, folks, that while .9 billion seems like a lot to you and me, and it is a lot, when you, when you talk about the millions of square footage of investment in this district and you amortize it, that's, that's not a lot of money. So, we can't view this in terms relative to ourselves. We need to put it in terms relative to the investment in the facilities that we have and the cost that it takes to replace those facilities as we go through this. And second, that three and a half cents at this time also is a reason why we want to consider doing this now, because we are actually buying ourselves a lot more if we do this than if we put this off and costs go up and the cost of buying money goes up, it's, we, we start to run into a detriment as we do that. So, I just want to emphasize, while it may seem like a lot of money to an individual, and it is to an individual, when you look at it in the, in the context of the, the fact that we have a .9 billion annual budget, and the fact that, as we said, at four and a half cents, we only got a half a billion dollars, we now have the opportunity to almost double that at three and a half cents. That's significant, folks, and we need to keep that in mind. So, with that, I'm going to close. Once again, thank you very much, folks. Keep the good work coming, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wow, that's a lot of stuff.
That was a bond.
Yeah.
We get 100%.
Yeah, because of our spending, we can borrow money at a much lower cost. But I guarantee in about three years, if we have our funding dollars go in, that rating will-
You want to go ahead and begin?
Yes. Mr. President and trustees, your next item on the agenda is regarding the state's current financial condition, and our district's legislative consulting team, the Wonder Twins, Dan Casey and Lynn Moke of Moke and Casey and Associates. You didn't watch that as a kid, no? No, never mind. It's definitely a generational thing. Okay.
Eighteen years old.
Isn't that great? Yes.
I saw you youngsters.
But they're here to offer their presentation about the state's financial conditions so that you may have a better picture of the possible impact on the state's funding and our development of our budget. So, Nicole Conley Abrams, our chief financial officer is here, too, but we'll turn it over to y'all and let you jump into it. Thank you for coming. I know it's a little late, but we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Kostaroff, and I'm Dan Casey, and with me is Lynn Moke, and we'll hit some highlights here as far as the current situation with the legislature in its second week now. Obviously, the substantial Republican control, that's if you've been caught up in current events for the last 15 or 20 years, that's been the norm. I think one of the things that's interesting this year, though, we've had a lot of large, large number of new legislators. If you look at the freshman class, I think they, the count I saw was 43 House members that were freshmen this year, and 24 who are essentially sophomores are in their second term. So, out of a, out of a body of 150, you've got nearly half who are either first or second-term legislators, which I think from the newspaper account, that's the most significant change we've seen in the last 40 years, sincerely 70s. With regard to that, you also have new leadership in a lot of the key positions. We have new chairs. House Public Education will have a new chair, the House has not named committees yet, but you have new chairs in Senate Education. Senate Finance, which is another, neither of those have turned over for some, some period of time, and then Senate Higher Education, so you've got some significant changes there. The other thing is, is that while we view the world from a public education perspective, there's a tremendous demand out there now for water and transportation financing policies and options. If you saw the, at least in the House, they announced a proposal for a $2 billion water plan. I think they're trying to fund it out of the rainy day fund, which has been pretty sacrosanct so far. The Texas Department of Transportation indicated recently that they need about $4 billion a year for maintenance and dealing with congestion. So, that's a, that's a significant sum. You also have healthcare issues. You've got over about $4 billion in unpaid Medicaid for this biennium and in additional costs going, going forward. So, we've got some pretty substantial challenges out there. On the education side, and the next slide, you have, as far as a lot, we'll probably have a broader discussion on issues this time than we've had in a long time. And part of this is Dr. Kostaroff indicated, we've got litigation ongoing, but as far as standards, but I think we're going to have as significant a debate on local versus state control that we've had, I think, in many years. And you've had discussion about four-by-four math and science requirements, graduation plan, and of course, tests, state and federal accountability systems. One of the things that's also up this year is that the Texas Education Agency is under sunset review, which is a significant fact. There's a lot of opportunities for, for improvement, and also opportunities for mischief related to that. Now, one of the things, and just before we came over, with regard to the entire testing and accountability issue, the, the House and Senate were posting their appropriations bills tonight, and one of the things Lynn noted as we came over is that right now, the testing and accountability budget item in TEA is about $82 million a year. They'd requested 92 million. The Senate appropriation bill shows 82 million, basically maintaining current level. The House for, which will make for lively discussion, put zero in for that amount in the appropriations bill that they filed. So, this will, will generate much, much interest. On the financing side, you've got, and this goes to the heart of the discussion they had two years ago in the court case and the rest, the equity issues, target revenue, additional state aid for tax reduction, which is really what fuels target revenue. Those are out there as far as issues. Cost of standards and whether or not this is generated by the court case or court case discussion, but I think one of the issues raised, and as you mentioned, Dr. Kostaroff was an excellent witness in the, in the court case, I think, did a very good job representing the district. But you've got the issue of cost of standards as far as, one of the items that I think much of the court discussion is about is the fact that we've had standards on one track and funding on another, and never the twain shall meet, and I think that's been a concern. The other issue is the replacement of lost funds. I mean, we had in terms of funding for this biennium, $4 billion or $2 billion a year in formula cuts and about 1.3 or 1.4 billion in grants, and whether or not replacement of those gets discussed. Now, you have a, a whole array of choice and control issues, and I think for the first time, in part due to changes in chairs, but other, other factors, we're going to have much more discussion about vouchers and scholarships and taxpayer-saving grants and those kinds of issues. I mean, you've heard discussion about parental trigger programs and other kinds of controls, and those are going to be discussed. Home rule charters as a, as a mechanism for kind of deregulation mode, but we'll see how those pan out. Campus funding allocations, and I think this is a focus of a lot of the court case, and I think that, and I think it's been a focus of this board and this district is looking at, at campus funding allocations. And in inter, intra-district choice and in general terms, I think this is going to be quite a broad array of issues this time. Now, if you look at the revenue estimate, and I guess I got the, more than, the, this is, in a sense, from where we've been, it's kind of more an abundance of riches than not. And if you think roughly in terms of the state budget, just from general revenue sources, about $90 billion is a good reference, .89 or $90 billion. Well, what the controller came up with is indicated in the revenue estimate released last week is that for the state's general revenue fund, there's actually anticipated to be a surplus of about 8.8 billion at the end, August 31st, 2013, which is a substantial underestimate. It kind of makes you wonder if we would have had quite as an aggressive discussion about cuts if we'd had a more aggressive revenue estimate at that time. But in addition to that, you're looking at some pretty conservative revenue growth estimates. If you look at about a $6 billion increase, you're seeing something there. And then, as far as transfers to the rainy day fund, they are expecting about an $11.8 billion balance in the rainy day fund at the end of 2015 fiscal year, so August, so that is far and away the highest amount that that has been. Now, the initial demands, as I indicated, health and human services, particularly Medicaid, they've got about five months of unpaid Medicaid, which is roughly about a $4 billion item that they'll have to address this spring. As far as what's needed for public schools enrollment growth, and what TEA had in their budget was about $2 billion to fund that and offset, I think, the fact property value growth is not fully restored. The payment delay, and this is the year we've got, they, in order to balance the budget, they delayed one of the payments, the foundation school program payments at the end of this year. That's about a $2.3 billion item that needs to be made up in some fashion. And then TEA announced, I think in the last, and this was part of, I think this is in the court case discussion, they announced that they were about a billion dollars short for the current biennium. Now, I think maybe some, some of the land commission actions may have made up about 300 million of that, but, so there's a shortfall as far as funding the current TEA budget, even post-cuts as far as this current year. So, we've got, those are kind of the initial demands that are, that are there. Now, as far as, despite things looking a little rosier on the, on the revenue side, from where we are, if you look at the, you would not sense that if you look at the leadership reactions to, to what's going on, because it's more, more an austerity approach. I think the leadership reactions so far largely protect the rainy day fund and then look for ways to reduce taxes on a variety of fronts. They're looking at potentially property tax reductions of some fashion. They've talked about a homestead exemption. The question you had earlier is correct. If you're over 65 and you're in a homestead, your school taxes are frozen, but it must be a homestead. If you own a rental house and you're over 65, then whatever increases in taxes are there. I think there's some provisions that if you have significant improvements, you may have your taxes go up, too, if you're over 65. But that's generally, the provision is that you are exempt from tax increases, and they actually freeze your tax amount, not the rate as such, but your, your amount's frozen when you first became eligible for it at that time. But then, I think, so you're seeing a lot of discussion about taxes, reducing taxes. We, I think we saw one to eliminate the business margins tax altogether. There was a bill filed to do that. And then, the other is the first steps as far as water and transportation, and what they're going to do on that front. Now, in terms of spending limits, we currently have a spending limit that limits appropriations from state taxes not dedicated by the Constitution to the growth in personal income. We, they actually voted to override that back in 2000, through 2006 or 2007, when, was it six, was it seven, when they were funding property tax relief as part of that tax compression program. But that's the only time that's been suspended, and that's been in place since 1978. Now, what we've had down, it's, it's not a real issue if the revenue estimates are low because you don't run against it. It's basically when revenues are on the upswing that you run into it. So, there's a chance we may even run into that this time as far as limiting the availability of revenue under the current system. There are also some very significant changes being proposed as far as changing that limit to limit increases to state and state funds on a broad basis to inflation and population growth and no other, no other adjustment. I think you'll find that the, the personal income number probably runs a little higher than that, but I think there's some real push to put in some very strict standards on this and make it more difficult in the future, more restrictive than the current limit. I keep waiting to come and give a good news presentation at some point in my life. I'm afraid it's not going to happen, but, but I hope I'll do this. As far as funding options, we looked at, you know, there's, there's really, there's, you can look at a range of options as far as how they move forward, and I think some of the conversation you had earlier, Dr. Kostaroff mentioned, we don't know what the legislature is going to do right now with the court case out there. But if you look at, there does not seem to be a major impetus for restoring the cuts that, that were made. I think we'll see much discussion about that, and hopefully, there's certainly merit to that. But we looked at, at six or seven different options for AISD for 1314, and they range from a $19 million decrease from where we are under what is now current law to a $59 million increase. Now, to get to that $59 million increase, you basically have to step back a couple of years to the formulas that were in place and then fully restore the cuts that were made, and that would basically do that. Now, the, the issue, and you would have some changes due to enrollment, population, value, growth, other factors, but I think that, you know, the options that we looked at as far as those that have any positive benefit basically really hinge on restoring those cuts. I mean, that would be the first step, I think. And then, and then you run into the question about how they're going to handle the, the target revenue system and other kinds of factors. So, if they made a, kind of a total retreat from where they are now, we could see some additional revenue for AISD, but it's very difficult to see a scenario where that's going to come to- other factors, but I think that, you know, the options that we looked at as far as those that have any positive benefit basically really hinge on restoring those cuts. I mean, that would be the first step, I think. And then you run into the question about how they're going to handle the target revenue system and other kinds of factors. So if they made a kind of a total retreat from where they are now, we could see some additional revenue for AISD, but it's very difficult to see a scenario where that's going to come to pass. And I think the worst option is, is that if you assume no change in funding statewide, you basically stay at the cut level and then redistribute within the context of that amount, that that's probably the worst scenario and certainly not a positive one for the district. If you look at the status of the lawsuit, trial began October 22nd. I think we're talking about concluding early to mid-February at this point. We'll see where that goes. I think Judge Dietz had indicated he wants to at least give an informal decision fairly early on, but we're assuming that it's going to take a month to two months probably to write a formal opinion. Legislative impact, I think, you know, if you look at past practice, it's been not to do much while this is going on in litigation, and then if there's something that is adverse to the state to deal with it in a special session. But so you're probably looking at, though, late 2013 or early 2014 before you'd see this Supreme Court opinion or action on this. So you're probably, past practice would suggest special session in early 2014 if we were going to follow what had happened the last time. But there is no question, whatever is done, there will be an appeal to the Supreme Court regardless of how Judge Dietz rules. Concluding thoughts, we've got a major legislative support for tax reduction and spending controls, and I think to the extent that, I think to counter some of the extreme positions in that regard, it's going to take a fairly major public effort, because we do have some extreme positions being staked out there. The other thing is the anti-testing sentiment is going to prompt a pretty serious discussion. There were some House and Senate differences on this last time, and I think the, what we saw in the appropriations bills as filed, between zero and eighty-two million dollars a year, that's a basis for a significant conversation on the topic, and that's certainly impetus to it. And then the choice issues, we're going to have to really see how these things are laid out and how they proceed on that, because there are a variety of things they're looking at. But I do think that the choice issues are going to be a significant factor this session as well. I think if you have questions, and I know it's another upbeat presentation that I get to do biannually and...
I just, I have a clarifying thing on your slide, Slide eight, where you said, you know, there's an appeal without question. So when, when, when do you think the special session would be? In what year are we talking about? When would we actually have a decision and then apply the time required to get actual relief? How long should our district be planning for the pain? How long do we have to kind of go through it?
Well, the most optimistic solution...
The most, yeah, there we go. The most optimistic solution calls for a special session probably post-primary, which puts it in the summer of 2014, in time for action in the 2014, '15 school year. That takes a whole series of assumptions to get it that quick, frankly. For instance, the state can decide to appeal it to the Third Court of Appeals so they can appeal it to the Supreme Court. We believe it will be the Supreme Court. Five out of six of the, or five out of, four out of five of the prior cases have gone directly to the Supreme Court, but that will be the loser's option, and in particular, we hope the state's option in that regard. So the 2014, '15 year would be as early as you could expect a legislative reaction, and even it would probably be spread over more than one year in terms of what kind of funding action they might take. The 2015 legislative session would be kind of the other, kind of the other end of where we think things will play out right now. But one of the problems that we have is that in this session of the legislature, we talked, Dan talked about the appeal calendar, but that kind of assumes that the legislature doesn't do a lot this session. If the legislature changes the end-of-course standards, changes the testing standards, as many are projecting they might, we may well end up back in Judge Dietz's court in the summertime for a brief rehearing before we can go, and that would lengthen the appeal time even further. But as I said, most optimistic if everything fell into place would be the 2014, '15 school year with a summer special session.
And just within that, just, I feel like I just have to ask one more time. We, no matter what, the sixty-million dollars that our district lost, it is permanent. Like, there's no hope of it ever coming back. I just trying to, trying to, I mean, no matter what all this does, we are, we'll never get that money back.
Well, I...
Keep it real.
I don't want to be quite that pessimistic.
Okay. Why should I be hopeful?
There are very, there have been some very large numbers tossed around in court about what the issues that are in court, the issues for adequacy and equity and suitability and state property tax should cost. And they've been compared to, we have a school finance system in Texas which is judged somewhere to be in the bottom twenty percent of the states. If we have a major funding change for public education, I think you could see one way or another that money coming back. Not back in this legislative session necessarily, but back in aggregate to the district as you look forward. But it, that's, I certainly wouldn't budget on that. I would certainly budget on a current law expectation right now, which would be for it to have no real change in 2013, '14 compared to 2014, compared to the 2012, '13 year.
Well, and in part, if they redistribute some of this, they may make some portion of that. But the other thing is, is that one of the concerns raised in the court case is that we've been operating with out-of-date funding formulas for a long time. You know, one of the things that's a significant factor for AISD, and we've talked about this in years past, is the cost of education index. For example, you have a much lower cost of education index than most urban districts, but that hasn't, that same cost of education index that was approved back in 1991 is still on the books today. I mean, if they do a significant formula rewrite and update some of these things, it may very well improve your position, but I think it's going to be difficult to get you back to where you were two years ago without some change in focus on their part as far as adequacy of funding and how they might go about increasing funding and redirecting funding.
If they continue where they left things in the last legislative session, though, you're correct, the additional, the hold harmless money that was passed in 2006 was partially terminated by the legislature last session, and they at least adopted a policy statement that said they would terminate it completely by, well, they adopted a legal change that terminated it completely by 2017, in Senate Bill One. So if we remain under the, if that, one of the entire issues that's in the court case, it's outside of the court case, it's in the legislature, is we've got these competing elements within education funding of adequacy, of state property tax, of allowing school districts meaningful discretion to enrich their programs, which is another constitutional principle, of having a suitable school finance system to meet constitutional standards. And the legislature frankly has done a lousy job for many years now in wrestling with that, the balance between those factors, and I would hope that they'll do a substantially better job if they, under this court case. But again, we have, we have a long way to go till we see what the Supreme Court opinion is. The Supreme Court will not tell the legislature how much to appropriate or what to appropriate. They will rule the current system unconstitutional if they do, and then lay out some principles by which they arrived at that conclusion. But they've always been very clear that the actual numbers for school finance for appropriations were not a matter of judicial concern, but a matter under our Constitution that was left to the appropriations power of the legislature.
I'm depressed.
Pessimistic enough.
The context for this presentation, it is not to have depressed you. It is really twice every other year, these fine gentlemen come and give us an update on their reading of the tea leaves before the legislative session and how it impacts us for purposes of budget planning. And so this is really to help us in our thinking as we develop the budget and things we need to think about for both this season and next, because remember, the legislature is going to pass a biennium budget in order for two years, and so what they give us, we have to live with for two years, and we need to think about that as we develop this year's budget, which is the first year of the biennium as well as the next budget. So we'll start off the questioning, Ms. Moya, and then Mr. Snyder, and then...
Thank you. The House is going to take the lead on filing the appropriations bill this year, right? Are they both filing, and the House is the one that they start from? Isn't that right?
I'm trying to remember. It's really a formality. The House and the Senate both introduce appropriation bills. They both considered them all the way through their process as Senate Bill One and House Bill One, and then they alternate as to which number prevails when they go to conference committee. But in terms of their, their actual consideration of the legislation, it's a simultaneous process in both the House and the Senate.
So I guess then, then after conference committee, HB One will be the one that comes out because it's the House's turn?
It's just the House's turn, right.
Okay. So, so as of right now, the appropriations bill that's being proposed has no restoration of the cuts from last time, but some money for student growth.
Correct.
And that's it?
Yeah, that's largely, there were a few exceptional items, but very few. I mean, they, yeah, it's largely not massive registration of grants or of, really no change in the funding formulas as things stand.
So when they, so going, moving to funding formulas, you were talking about the cost of education index. Are they, are the other formulas being reconsidered as well? I mean, I say formulas, but you've got the cost of education index, and you've got all of those other percentages and things for your student populations, and all of those that are older, twenty, thirty, forty years old.
Well, you've got a large number of them go back to the mid-'80s, the major reform efforts that were done then, and I think where that comes about is if the court deems the system unconstitutional in some fashion, and I think one of the issues being raised, and was raised in a lot of the testimony to date, is the fact that they've had a statute on the books since the mid-'90s, which directs the Budget Board every two years to do a complete comprehensive review of all the funding formulas and adopt rules and make recommendations, and they've never done it. You know, and I think that that's one of the, one of the issues as to why the formula structure is out of date. There simply hasn't been, in my view, there hasn't been the legislative will to move forward and do what they need to do in that regard. There are periodic efforts, and there were, for example, the Dana Center back in 2000 did a real major study on the, a very good study on the cost of education index, but it never got any traction as far as getting adopted. You know, so that's somewhere along the way, you hope the court points that out and that requires them to go back and really do some basic research on these issues.
Okay, so for the benefit of those who have just arrived in November, those are the weights and allocations of funding for different student populations and different things. And so, and a lot of those weights and allocations are very, 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 very old. And so the, and so I was going to suggest, Mr. Torres, that if our new arrivals, oops, I used the word new, recently arrived trustees, our nets, newly elected trustees, need a primer on school finance. You know, it might be helpful for them to understand some of these buzzwords that we're using, because it takes a while to really understand, and truthfully, you know, I've been working with a longtime, Robert, you have too, we've all have, and I still don't understand it completely. Don't ask me to try to figure out one of the formulas, because I cannot, but I, you know, I, you know, have a general understanding of how it works. So, you know, and so it would probably be really helpful for you guys to get a primer on it to really, you know, get a good, you know, foundation on what we're talking about. So that might be something to put on the list of trainings, whoever's keeping up the list. You said state property tax. The Constitution prohibits us from having a state property tax, so are we talking about changing the Constitution and to add a state property tax? Or I realize that's part of the lawsuit alleging that we, in essence, we have a state property tax because of how we fund education, but I'm not sure if that's really what y'all meant, or if you meant that there's a move to actually change the Constitution to have a state property tax.
Well, go ahead, some of both, actually, some of both.
Yeah, a little bit of both. It is an issue in the lawsuit, that's what I was referring to. There are some senior legislators, especially in the Senate, who believe part of the solution to school finance is to have a state property tax and replace much of the local property tax with a state property tax. And as one of the debate elements that comes out of this, there's a, the prohibition against a state property tax is a, the grounds for the lawsuit essentially are is our local property tax acts like a state property tax. For all intents and purposes, it is a state property tax, and the courts have held in that case it is unconstitutional. But frankly, it's not the best of the things that we would hope the court would find. The issues of adequacy are far more important in our view for public education than the issue of the state property tax, but it is there, and there is legislative consideration that will likely be at least brought up, if not this legislative session, in response to what the Supreme Court might rule.
Okay. I'll yield now so that other people can ask questions. I have a couple more for later.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, guys, for the presentations. Nice to see you outside of the courthouse. And I'd also like to thank you for the trial summaries that you've been putting on your website. I find it very helpful and a very, very good way to follow things that are out there. I'd like to get your opinion on one thing. You're probably aware that Kansas settled their, at least part of their lawsuit on public ed last week, and I was struck by the way the Kansas courts handled the situation where they actually directed, I think it was like 600, 800 dollars, something like that, per student be given, whereas our courts have chosen to take a, that's not our job, go talk to the ledge and see what they come up with. Your thoughts on the differences between the two? I know that there's a suit in Colorado that's somewhat along the same lines. It would seem to me that absent direction from the court system, that we're likely going to be stuck in the same place that we've been for at least the last 30 years or so in trying to get some kind of reasonable action out of the legislature in terms of funding public ed.
Well, one of the things being sought as far as a remedy that David Thompson has pursued is, is he wants to see the courts direct, whoever ultimately decides, the Supreme Court, whomever direct the legislature to actually do a study on these funding elements and the costs of funding the program they have in place. Now, I hadn't gone back, I hadn't read all the Kansas material, but I went back and looked at, there was some compilations of cases in recent years, and it struck me that more courts out of the recent decisions the last five or 10 years have kind of given the legislature, in my view, reading it, was a lot of discretion as far as how they handle funding. I mean, they're kind of... I mean, they're kind of leaning more toward the view that this is a political decision and one that they have to provide for meeting their constitutional standards for education. But I think they're giving legislators much more discretion than some of the earlier cases. If you go back 30 years to some of the New Jersey cases, probably sound more like what Kansas was doing than what I've seen from some of the other states. And just kind of a quick review of those.
I think there is a real, a real problem about legislative action. I mean, we've had, we've had two major studies directed by the legislature, two interim studies, powerful interim committees created. I think the last one had 22 members or something, that were created with the direction by the legislature to these committees to bring forward a new school finance system. The results, the combined results of the two efforts are a couple of, a couple of slides and some generalized comment on school finance with no real solutions ever offered or attempted. And as Dan said, in the case, we are trying to make the point through testimony that the legislature has failed that fundamental responsibility. But I really, I really have very little expectation that the court, the court might back up a process such as David is proposing, but I have very little expectation the court would actually go as far as where Kansas and some other states have been in terms of mandating a particular number. New York State was another example of that. They just, this is round six in our visits to the Supreme Court, and I think they've made it fairly clear that that's a line they don't intend to cross as they read the Texas Constitution. And I don't know whether, I haven't tried to compare the Kansas provisions with the Texas provisions, but the power to appropriate funds and being so clearly a directive in the Texas Constitution to the legislature has been held up as a reason that the Supreme Court simply will not make that kind of finite judgment as to how much is enough.
Yeah, as I say, the one time I researched the appropriation issue, it's been a jealously guarded legislative prerogative since about 1350. And it was, the king approached the fledgling House of Parliament and wanted horses and, or wanted funding for an army, and he said, well, what are you using it for? So the first appropriation bill was a list of swords and horses and other kinds of things, and they've since held on to that authority tightly since that time.
I'm trying to struggle for a way to see some kind of process to get the legislator, I mean, whether it's the House or the Senate side, to actively do something about either restoring formulas or putting more money in. And, you know, it's so dramatically complicated by the lawsuit that it's hard to see anyone doing anything. Now, one of the exceptions I've seen is Senator Patrick on the Senate side, not that I necessarily agree with everything he's been proposing, but, you know, he does seem to be out there trying to advocate for statewide property taxes, an example, to at least supplement or get us on the road to getting away from strictly local property taxes. And, you know, I'm wondering if you guys see any way to get traction with the legislature on anything that's going to move things forward. So it's not just a total lurch once the, you know, Supreme Court ruling comes down.
Well, the natural case for action now is in the cuts the legislature made the last session. When they cut $5.2 billion out of the budget, cut the pre-kindergarten money, cut the performance salary money, cut the technology allotment and the student success initiative, and then cut $4 billion out of the foundation program. That, that cut, which was unprecedented in Texas history, remains the number one foundation for going forward to the legislature to ask for restoration of funding. And if you will, right now, we, our issue is kind of back in the pack of, if you think of a race in which right now, the water and transportation and tax relief and even health and human services for a different reason are out there in front, well, we're back in the pack in terms of that. And the question is, is how to mobilize and bring support to the proposition that the legislature should restore those reduced funds, especially in light of a revenue estimate that indicates the cuts were never necessary to begin with. And that fundamentally is our belief as to that message, as to how successful can education, how successful can teacher groups, school board groups, administrative groups, public citizen groups, how can we most forcefully bring that issue to the legislature and demand action? The vehicles are there, as we said in the presentation. It's much more an issue of political will than it is actual funding at this point.
Right, thank you.
Some folks have any burning questions, let's get them out there for Dan. Did you have one, Mr.? Then we'll wrap it up.
Right. I understand, or I believe there's a bill that was offered, I can't remember who, what side of the Capitol it is, House or Senate, that actually restores the cuts. But I can't, I read it today, I think, on the Tribune side or something. Is that?
Maybe Representative Lon Burnham, I think.
Maybe that's it, Lon Burnham.
Yeah.
He did, I had not caught up with today's bill, so.
I think he had one, though, he was tying one to an income tax as well, so I don't know.
Well, yeah, that's also against the Constitution. So they're going to have to find a way to amend the Constitution, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll wrap it up with Dr. Chris Arfins' last question, and then we'll move to the next item.
So today I had an opportunity to listen to the Lieutenant Governor, who was talking a little bit about the legislative session. And on page five, but your slide four, there's a line that says vouchers/scholarships. What, could you just share with us exactly what's happening? I mean, people have talked about it coming back in the, as a, you know, in the emergency session, and, you know, and the way that it's described sometimes sounds so sweet and innocent, like, oh, get a scholarship. And how can someone not say yes to a scholarship? What exactly are the words we need to be looking for, understanding, when in this session they talk about vouchers and all the different versions that could, you know, impact our schools? And what exactly is happening? What, where are we in that?
The Lieutenant Governor and Senator Patrick, who's chairman of the Senate Education Committee, held a press conference before the session started that they would introduce a, I believe they called it a scholarship bill. What was the phrase you had?
Taxpayer savings grants.
Yeah, or taxpayer savings grants. And basically what it is, is a scheme to take, for businesses to get a credit for paying on their franchise tax, if they pay up to 25% of what they owe to some entity that is going to provide scholarships to private schools for some number of students. What we've been waiting for since then is the bill. And we haven't seen the bill as of yet, because the bill is going to be where the detail is, and we haven't, they haven't produced it yet. But Senator Patrick is, has put a very high priority on passage of this kind of system. Now, there are other kinds of systems that have certainly been offered, and some have been offered in the past. Last session, there was a bill that would have had open-ended vouchers to anybody who wanted to attend a private school without limit. This appears to be a much more limited version that is being brought forward at this point. The Senate, Senator Patrick and the Lieutenant Governor are very strongly for this. I don't know that anybody's counted noses yet in the Senate about that proposal, but remember that under standard procedure, it has to have two-thirds of the Senate supporting the bill in order to pass the bill. So that's a, so they have to have 21 votes in the Senate to bring up that bill. And whether there are 21 votes for the scholarships at this point, I don't know. How they would work and who would be affected and how districts, how parents would apply for them, as I say, we're waiting for the bill.
But the word vouchers isn't in it. It's the taxpayer savings grants that, that's the language that's out there.
That language and the word scholarship attached to it, from those grants. But it is a, the House has indicated, at least in a preliminary fashion, the leadership, people that we expect to be in a leadership position in the House, that they have no great interest in this proposal. Because in the House, when vouchers or voucher-like votes have come to the floor of the House in the past, it has been a scene of a certain degree of political carnage that speakers don't often like to see in the House they're presiding over. And that, so I don't know how the House will view that legislation if it comes to the House, and various games are being talked about. For instance, of having an omnibus bill that includes choice, but includes various elements of choice from this list, but also includes the reduction of, and of course, testing and some other measures, the flexibility in the four-by-four curriculum requirements that might be all packaged together to try to force the House to take the whole package or leave it. It's going to be a long legislative session, and it's very possibly going to have a special session added on to the end of it to get these matters resolved. But that's really where we stand today. As you said, you don't see the word voucher yet, but in every education group that I'm familiar with, they have strong policy positions to oppose any bill with vouchers in it. And the, and everybody is reading the Senator Patrick and Lieutenant Governor Dugur's proposal as a voucher proposal, or the beginnings of a voucher proposal, despite the name that goes with it.
Well, and I think one other aspect to watch on these is, are there any accountability provisions related to these? Because I think that, I saw one legislator quote a couple of months ago saying, well, I'd be all for these, but not if it's going to require the private school to report anything to the state, or it's going to require testing of those students. And I thought, well, this is, you know, this is, it's kind of writing a check. And the concern I've heard from some of your counterparts are on some of these plans. They've talked about, you know, a $5,000 or $6,000 grant, whatever it happens to be, early in the year, going to the parents. And when I had somebody say, maybe, well, what if homeschooling doesn't work out by the first of November and they show up at our doors? We've got an obligation to educate them, but what is the likelihood, we're ever going to secure the $5,000 or $6,000 per student that went to that household? And I think that's a legitimate concern. I mean, you may very well end up having to educate those kids without, with the funding largely gone at that point. So there's a lot of those kinds of things. But I think that the accountability issue is one that I think that to watch pretty carefully, because we do have some folks who want to largely distribute funds to private schools without any, without the same testing requirements or anything else that you face.
Aren't they using the word choice as a substitute for voucher in order to disguise it so that people don't catch on? Because that's the way I read it, or that's my interpretation of what I see churning over there. Yeah?
Yeah.
Well, Senator Patrick has made the point that, he wraps all this into the very large proposal that he calls the civil rights issue of our time, and will be his rhetoric. That, that, he looks at students as being trapped in low-performing schools, is, again, the kind of rhetoric that you hear that goes with that and demonstrates, tries to demonstrate that this is an alternative. I think it's, the issues you've wrestled with here in Austin indicate clearly that this is a far more complex problem than simply turning a switch as to where someone is attending school. But I, on behalf of Dan and I, I just wanted to express our appreciation to the district. We have had a long working relationship, and we look forward to continuing it during this rather important legislative session as we go forward.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Casey, Mr. Moe. Greatly appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, we'll move to the next item, Dr. Chris Arfins.
Great. Nicole Conley is here, our Chief Financial Officer, to do the revised fiscal forecast for fiscal year, would that be '14, right? Fiscal year '14?
Yeah.
Yeah, fiscal year '14 preliminary budget, and with tax rate and compensation. So I'll just turn it over to you to get started. I know it's late, and we want to try to end on time.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Nicole Conley, CFO for Austin ISD. So as Dr. Chris Arfins stated, I'll be updating you with our current financial forecast, utilizing some of the depressing information that was already presented. We're assuming the same thing, so it's no news to me. The Board has been multi-year budgeting and forecasting since fiscal year 2010. We put it in place. It's a good best practice, and it has allowed us to mitigate some really challenging financial times. And so many of the schedules that we will present on the budget will include multi-year forecasts as a result of Board action and policy requirements. So I will not only just discuss the forecast, but I will talk a little bit about possible compensation scenarios as we sort of build and develop FY 2014, and the impact of various tax rate options as we contemplate a possible tax ratification election. And so that's sort of the sequence of tonight. I do have some information for background for some of our new trustees, so I'm going to try to move as quickly as possible, but there is more context here than what normally would have been presented, because we have been working on our budgeting process since September. And so it's an innovative process. But just building the budget, we sort of start with a baseline assumption, and that's what we consider the forecast, and that's what you're seeing tonight. And we take that sort of, it basically is a same services budget. So the cost of what we do today and the services that we provide, and we forecast those out for the out-years, assuming against a projected expenditure level and revenue level. And then on top of that, we start identifying new needs or strategic funding investments that we would incorporate on top of that to really come up with a total pressure budget for FY '14. And then obviously, we report monthly to the Board and, with monthly reports and various forecasts, as we monitor and analyze the budget once it's adopted and put into place. This is some background. The Board has already demonstrated historically notable, strong financial management. Our rating agencies are quite pleased with the Board actions that it's taken to date. It finds them very prudent. We've accelerated financial policies that had not been put into place and established. And as a result, we have a credit worthiness that has earned us the AAA, and we've received numerous accolades from the Comptroller in transparency and budgeting, and won, you know, commensurate award. So the Board's action has been duly noted, and our financial planning practices are something that has been greatly received. So just some timelines, we started our dialogue subsequently on the '14 budget, right after we adopted the FY '13 budget, so it's like budgeting in perpetuity. So we've already taken action on the parameters, the calendars, we've set the strategic priorities, we've taken some actions on the assumptions and staffing formulas, and we publish these timelines so that we are, so the public can have an opportunity for meaningful for meaningful participation in the budget process, so they can know the key milestones and be actively engaged. The next phase, you know, the board is scheduled, they approve the AFRs. In January, we were talking about, you know, our forecast, what we're thinking, the tax rate, compensation. We've accelerated some of this dialogue as a result of some of our past budget development timelines. And then in February, the end of February, we will, the administration will present its sort of first proposal on the FY 2014 budget. And then subsequently, during March through August, the presented, the preliminary budget will be vetted by the board and the public subsequently. We will make revisions to the proposed budget, and then ultimately, the board will approve the budget and the tax rate in August, in an August timeline, and if it wants to consider calling for a TRE for November 13. I just want to remind the board and the public of the 13, 14 district priorities that were established by the board, and they are based, they are the basic sort of funding components that, where we build all of our proposals around these district priorities. So all of our budget requests would be aligned to meeting these priorities. So currently, our forecast, we're forecasting about a $38 million shortfall in revenue for FY 14, again, based upon the assumption that there are no new cuts, that the cuts that we have stay. And so the no restorations, it accounts for inflationary factors, for fuel, health, electricity, and it also is inclusion of the one-time salary adjustment, the 3% salary adjustment that was provided this fiscal year that we had, that would be one-time unless there's a recurring revenue stream to support it. And so, so with that, we also assume that there isn't going to be any other additional adverse cuts as related to the elimination of ASATR, which if fully implemented by 2017 would cost the district an additional $100 million on top of the $60 million in cuts that we've already taken. So we're assuming that the legislature is sort of going to stay put, and that goes back to the funding options that Mo Casey talked about, another cut of $21 million, which we prudently set aside some reserves in case that does happen. But on the plus side, if we could get fully restored, getting $59 million back. Just staff compensation, you know, the impetus behind the 3%, we know that salaries were frozen for two years in the district, other, our regional counterparts were going up, so we knew that we had to address compensation in some kind of way if we wanted to stay competitive, since we're already behind nearly 4%, just our local peers, even before we put the 3% in place. And obviously, they went up as well, so the gap is still remains. We also had a district strategy as part of our financial planning to basically increase our reserves and build them up over the next, last few years, taking advantage of one-time revenue. We've also went back and did audits to previous state entitlements. We've gotten about nearly $4.5 million based upon our own efforts to go back and recalculate prior year entitlements. So we've been very aggressive about bringing in revenue to the extent that we can, and then we were able to sort of fund the 3%. We've made a commitment to stabilize for the next few years, but we do understand that the board and the public were contemplating some new needs resulting from AFRs. We've got out-year projections for the M&amp;O impact from some of our bond initiatives currently under consideration. And we also have an aggressive strategic plan, and that necessitates additional investment. We are, you know, the magic is, we've pretty much exhausted the magic in terms of efficiencies and cuts. I mean, we've, we've done quite a bit. Most of the stuff that's left on the table are items that are extremely polarizing and challenging for this district. And you're going into the ugly options like closures and eliminating planning periods, those last-ditch efforts. So there's no more low-hanging fruit to sort of balance. And so moving forward, we have to look at a more balanced approach, which means that we basically essentially have to look to secure revenue to really be able to stabilize in the out-years. So the finance, I wanted to bring your attention, there's some considerations when you look at the forecast. Again, it assumes sort of same services budget, no programmatic increases beyond what we currently offer today. We know that fund balance is not a sustainable solution, it's a short-term solution. So while we've built it into a possible two-to-three-year strategy, you know, rating agencies are going to expect us to have a multi-year, extended financial plan that essentially restores that revenue at some point in time. Just to remind you, a downgrade on our rating agencies would not only cost taxpayers, but it would certainly result in negative effects to potential bond investors in the future. So again, this doesn't assume any additional state cuts, but we do, we do have a set-aside reserve, if there are, to give us some time to catch up, depending on what comes out of this legislative session. So as we sort of sum everything up, this slide sort of talks about the pressures going into the 14 as we build the budget. We've got the baseline, $38 million. We've got compensation beyond just the 3%. So as, as again, there's about, as we know, tax breaks associated with FICA are all expiring. We've got the cost of incremental growth and cost of healthcare. So we can expect other, our surrounding districts to possibly consider an additional compensation increase. So we're presuming a reasonable consideration or set-aside is about 1.5%, maybe the cost of those increases. So you may be, you know, we may have to contemplate not only maintaining the 3%, but considering an additional 1.5% just to keep pace with our counterparts. Because as they inch up, we inch up, and we still haven't addressed the gap issue. We've got some mandatory and statutorily required increases to maintain our services associated with things like special education, some of our contractual and interlocal agreements with even security even. So we, we know that we have an obligation to fund those. Again, the AFRs, the bonds, other strategic initiatives, and sequestration, which was only postponed by two months. That would be almost a $5 million impact if we had to absorb those cuts again, but we would probably have to look into utilizing our reserves to buy us some time as we riddle down program reductions in those areas. I do want to articulate the importance of maintaining our reserve, most of which I've already said before, but we're one of few districts in the state of Texas that has the highest bond rating. We also are, I believe, one of the only districts to have a commercial paper program, which saves taxpayers monies. And so we basically borrow when we need to borrow. We don't go out and we don't issue an $800 million bond issue. We only borrow incrementally as we need the cash. Our interest rates on our CP program are like 0.25% versus going out and borrowing and paying interest on $800 million at an expense of 5%, which allows us to save taxpayers. When I think about the debt schedule associated with the 3.5 cent increase, it really is a penny each year over three years. And then those pennies go back down 2 cents the subsequent year. So because of the way that we issue our debt, our financial impact on, even on the bond program is, is much less substantial than what you would traditionally see through a traditional bond program. So, so it's important for us to maintain our AAA, and the first thing that the rating agencies do is look at your fund balance and your reserves. And, you know, those highly rated AAA districts in Texas, they do have reserves of in excess of 20% of their operating budgets and expenses. When I look at Round Rock, others, commensurate districts, those are the levels that they have. And so it's important to have those reserve. Also, it's our cash flow. I mean, we all know, most people pay their property tax bills, they wait until the end of December. So that means we essentially have to float and pay cash on all of our expenditures without revenue for at least four months after we start the fiscal, school year. So, and we pay out about $60 million a month, $60 million a month in payroll expenses. You add another probably $15 million associated with vendor payments. And so those are substantial amounts of cash that we have to have on reserve to be able to pay those bills, as well as the fact that our federal dollars are reimbursable. So we don't get the upfront cash. We have to go out and float the cash, and then we draw down for reimbursement. So our reserves are very important. Otherwise, we have to go out and borrow for cash, which is an additional incremental cost. So a lot of times, you know, we try to fight to protect our reserve levels so that they're adequate enough to maintain our cash flows, so that we can do those flows and secure our payroll in a way that doesn't allow, you know, doesn't create a necessity to go out and borrow for cash. And then obviously, we don't want to face a downgrade, just because it does, from a public perspective, it, you could, you could see your, your paper, the value of your paper erode with investors. And right now, our paper trades very well. We are extremely credit-worthy, so we want to stay that way. And this is just graphically what our reserves have been over time. We've built them up, and we're sort of spending them down, but we've all done so with a strategy in mind of being able to float through some of these tough fiscal years. You can see the cash flow by month. I mean, you can see we just basically have that major collection, and then things just basically taper off until we're able to pull in cash again. So just briefly on compensation, I've spoken to you a bit about it. We've got the 4.2 million to maintain the 3% adjustment is already assumed in our shortfall assumption. And then we're, possibly, we might want to consider, I know that our Chief Human Capital Officer, my co-pilot, has been looking at compensation. We're constantly monitoring where our peers are, our local peers, where, with, you know, Eames, Round Rock, if they're going up, if they're not. But there is indication that they will increase in compensation, so we would like to try to keep pace with that. And that doesn't even allow us to make progress against the, our teacher salary gap. So you're looking at about a $21.5 million probably possible requirement as we build the 14 budget. Just on tax rate, I have some information and background about the various tax structures. You know, we have an M&amp;O tax rate, which basically pays for our operating budget, INS, which pays from the debt. They're both capped by law. There's a 50 cent debt limitation and $1.17 on the M&amp;O. Our property values are rising, but they're not rising as, they're not increasing at the rates that they were when, during the boom periods. We actually had a dip in FY 11, which we're sort of playing some catch-up in sort of that appraisal value drop. And so while we're climbing out of it, we're not climbing out substantially, which is probably why we had to increase the debt on the projected bond by 3.5 cent, because otherwise, we were able to go six years in 2004, 2008 without increasing the tax, the pennies. Before property tax law got put into place in 2005, 2006, the M&amp;O tax rate for AISD was actually 28% higher, so it really taxes, the tax rate is 28% lower since 2002, 2003. But clearly, and we've been flat for the last few years on our tax rate. We did, again, have to go up on the debt side, but we haven't increased our M&amp;O tax rate since the 2008 tax rate election that increased the tax rate 3.9 pennies. This is more on the tax rate limitations and before compression. I won't read that, but you have that in front of you. For 25 years, school districts were, like our other taxing jurisdictions, like the city and the county, where you could basically increase your tax rate to the rollback level, which is essentially the revenue that's needed to maintain your current operations. Now, school districts are the only entity that have to go out to voters for a tax rate election. So the city and the county, they can automatically kind of increase their tax rate to make, to basically meet their current revenue standards. Once we go past $1.04, school districts are required to go out and do a TRE and have voter authorization. So that's a unique difference for school districts. And you can see, this is for your information, everyone talks about the golden pennies, the silver and the copper. So you can see that the golden pennies are those four pennies above the compress rate that are not subject to recapture or voter approval. We're well beyond that. We're at 107.9, so we are into the copper pennies. And so everything that we do requires voter approval and is subject to recapture. This is historical tax burden over time. You can see the last few years, taxpayers incrementally went up about $27, and the revenue generated from possible tax rate increase. And so Dr. Chris Arvin mentioned that, you know, I had some potential minimums, but not necessarily minimums, but, you know, where we would sort of utilize a combination of strategies if we were to do a tax rate, a tax rate election and utilizing some of our reserves over the next few years. But you can see here that even if we went for the full nine cents available to us, it only nets us $31 million, and so that doesn't even make up for the shortfalls that we're talking about. So we're absolutely going to have to have some release from the state in terms of, I'm hopeful that the lawsuits will result in some, some level of relief so that we can sort of plan for the out-years. But, and that's because a substantial amount of these dollars are subject to recapture. So even though we take in about $55 million, we would pay recapture in the remaining components. And then you have some information on our election history. And then going forward, we are continually refining our estimates. You know, we, just like the state comptroller has to set the revenue estimate for the legislature, we are bound by the chief appraiser in what they say our property values are. So we, and that's, those are the controls so that school districts don't go out and say they're going to get more money than they actually net in. And our appraiser, we have a new appraiser, and the appraiser has been fairly conservative about tax rates, even though increases in our taxable value do not benefit AISD because of the, the target revenue system that was put into place. But we do utilize that information to forecast for the bond and the M&amp;O side, but we'll continually review these, our forecasts, our baseline assumptions. We're working with staff to refine some of our potential budget requests that might be included in the FY 14 budget, and we're finalizing our close, our year-end close, and, and that's included in my presentation, so I'll take any questions that you may have.
Nicole, I'm sorry, Ms. Conley. I just have a clarifying question. You, when you talked about the bond increase, that we bond as we go. So we only, we issue bonds as we need, as we need for cash. So we basically have a commercial paper program, which is like a multimillion-dollar credit card? Yeah, yeah. But my point is, let's say we start building, and at the end of the day, what we once needed for $889 million, the, I don't know, the building market becomes incredibly affordable, and we only need $600 million, we could basically never bond for the rest. We could just stop, we could stop issuing our paper, and we'd be fine.
Right, because we're talking about authorization.
Okay, okay, okay. So does that also apply to the TRE?
No, because the board
Why?
Because the board has to set the tax rate.
So once it's set, you have to take that amount.
Right, you adopt the tax rate first, and then you call for the election. Yes. So we did try to put together some possible language as part of the legislative strategy to ask for authorization, like, you know, give us the ability to ask the voters for the full nine cents, but only access it when we need it. But, you know, that, you know, that is something that, you know, I definitely think we should strongly consider. So then, in a sense, we would be like other taxing jurisdictions and only borrow what you need. But unfortunately, current law requires the board to adopt the budget and adopt the tax rate, and then call for the election. So you have to adopt the higher tax rate, and that's what triggers the sequence of events for TRE.
And in adopting that higher tax rate, you can't do it like three pennies and then another three pennies? Just, you have to do all
You have to adopt the tax rate.
If you did nine, you'd have to do all nine.
Right.
End of story.
And, right. The only thing where we've applied this flexibility in the past is when we put notice in the newspaper. When we, you know, we have to publish the proposed tax rate in the newspaper so that the public can come and give board public comment on the proposed tax rates. And so at one point in time, when we were considering a TRE, but we couldn't necessarily decide upon the level of tax rate, we just said the full nine pennies to give wide authority. So, because the board always has the authority to set the tax rate lower than what it publishes, but it can't authorize a tax rate that's higher than what it published in the newspaper for public reporting and discretion, yeah.
Ms. Conley, first of all, I want to thank you also for two things. One, ever since you've been involved in it, one of the things that you've had as one of your principles, and certainly the superintendent's, has been the community input on the budget and the whole process. And I remember that first year where we had those community meetings in different schools and things. And the other one is transparency in preparation of the budget and transparency in helping to try to understand, as complex as it is, the budget and helping folks to do that. So thank you once again, and as we start down that path, we greatly appreciate all your your efforts in that regard. Okay, we'll open up for questions, board members. Ms. Sparksdale.
Yes, thank you so, so much. I mean, I have friends who are on boards in other districts in this state and others, and the lamenting that they have about the budget process, and I'm so glad we don't have any part of that in our districts, so to continue to be a great job. I have a question that is not specific to your presentation, but sort of more general. I've been asked this question a couple of times as the ledge is upon us and just kind of different constituents have reached out to ask a question. I don't think I quite know the answer to. I know that our, the cost of the district is about 80, 85% labor, the cost of running the school, the school district, and we grow as students come in and, but the region also grows, and so, the money coming in, you would think would grow, except that we've been in a recession, so property values have gone down. But over the next, let's say, five years, are the biggest hits or growth areas in our budgets still going to be labor? Are there any other categories that are, that are growing faster than we can keep up with it and fund by just general student growth and the money that comes with that? Is there anything else that's putting pressure on our budget? You have a list of pressures here, like new AAFRs and things we're adding on as a board or as a district. But is there anything built in that causes the need for more money?
Right, so healthcare is huge, because, you know, with the new federal healthcare requirements, we're, I mean, that could add an additional 4% on our expenses on any given year. Also, the impact on, we've been closely monitoring the electricity, but our biggest spending pot is facilities. I mean, that's the other piece as well. And so, all of this sort of electricity, every time we open up, build an addition, it will necessitate additional custodians. So those are the major cost drivers. Now, as soon, as we get more enrollment growth, right, we have to support them through, you know, we're bound to state law at a 22 to 1, so we have to organize teachers, and so we have to organize additional staffing resources. But I would say, the biggest, most challenging aspect of our budget outside of just keeping pace in compensation is healthcare. That's a huge driver for us, and we are constant, and the enrollment fluctuations are challenging for us, considering the fact that we, this year, right, so I don't know if it's a trend or if it's something that, you know, is a one-time anomaly, but we've basically flattened for enrollment.
Right.
So we were projecting, you know, before, we would always utilize a production of 600 to 700 students for revenue assumptions. And so, now, we're basically holding our revenue assumptions to a much more moderate level to see whether or not that trending is going to continue in the out years. So we only get new revenue if we, if our WADA goes up, meaning that we have to have more kids and those kids have to have more specialized needs. And we also have to, and the tax rate. And so, appraisal values don't help us. We have seen some substantial growth in the need for early PPCD programs for special education. So we've been putting, we've been spending much more for specialized needs at the earlier levels as a result of special education. And we have really competitive and strong special ed programs. I mean, parents oftentimes, you know, will, you know, look for support in our program. So those continue to be attractive options for our parent community. And so, that results in the need for additional expenditure and staffing. But, but so, so I would say, our enrollment growth, while it seems to be, we don't know if it's tapering off or if this is a trending thing, but it's something that will affect our revenue, especially if our healthcare expenses, our needs to address specialized populations, and just the sheer requirements for maintaining our building infrastructure, meaning electricity, fuel, I mean, fuel just goes, you know, we all buy gas, but in, you know, we have, you know, a fleet of buses that we have to account for. So we build in almost a million a year just on, for, you know, gas and fuel. So as those things sort of increase, and if our revenue doesn't increase, keep pace with that, we're always going to be at a deficit. And the state funding system is structured that way. It doesn't fund us for inflation. The assumption is that somehow we magically figure out a way to absorb it, and it's just not balancing. And so, it creates pressures for us every year, because we're automatically going to have those inflationary factors, and we're going to have to account for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole, it's always a pleasure for your reports, because they're so easy to understand. Thank you so much. You know, the state stopped paying or stopped funding enrollment growth last session, so even when we get more children, we don't get those dollars that we used to get for enrollment growth. So, you know, and even though restoring that is in HB1 for this session, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to stay there. So we don't get the enrollment growth money that we used to get, which is, you know, an extra pressure. I wonder, Nicole, for, when we talk about our compensation, are we including a compensation increase for our classified employees, our hourly employees?
Yes, the one and a half assumes all similar situated employees that received the 3% last, the last time, this fiscal year. I know that we've been working on looking at the hourly rates, and we'll probably have some additional information as the budget process develops. We've already done some analysis, and so, we know the cost implications of that, so that will be, also be included in that one and a half.
Well, that's good. I'm glad to know that, thank you. Because, you know, I realize, you know, that our hourly rates are probably in line with the surrounding school districts, but I just feel like we need to be paying a livable wage, a living wage, livable, living, living wage, living wage. And, and I know that we're behind on that. So I appreciate, you know, y'all's work on that, thank you.
I also want to thank you, because not only back what you were remembering, Mr. Torres, but I've been working in the public in different ways with the school district, and Ms. Conley Abrams has been very present in our PTAs, in our council work and everything. So I really, really appreciate the work that you do, not only in this, but out in our community, thank you. Can you talk a little bit more about the target revenue system versus our property tax increases and how they are not relating to each other?
Sure.
I know.
So it's basically like a two-tiered system, right? You have your weights and your ratios that sort of work you up to a formula level, and then you have a target revenue system that's basically either builds you up or drags you down to a 2005, 2006 level, depending upon which school district you're in. So it basically holds you to that revenue per WADA level back in 2005 or 2006, and you stay at that level unless you, unless you have a WADA increase. And so, we take, we basically are essentially frozen at that WADA per revenue, and so, if our taxable base increases and we collect new tax levy revenue associated with that, that revenue basically gets funneled back into the target revenue system. We're dragged back down and we pay it as part of our recapture requirement. So we're basically held flat in terms of our revenue per WADA under the target system.
So how do you ever get a TRE? I mean, how is that ever going to affect what we actually have to spend?
Well, the TRE on, you know, so, so I said, there are two ways that our revenue, more revenue, either increase WADA or we increase the tax rate. We can increase the tax rate and we would benefit from additional revenue, however, 45% of it would be subject to the recapture system.
So by increasing the tax rate, that changes our WADA?
Right, well, yes, yes. It changes your revenue, yes, yes, it does, essentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else? And I think it's been suggested that we have a training for the trustees on finance systems. So we'll schedule that and probably have Ms. Abrams provide that for us.
Well, I, I'll be joined by my deputy, Leo Lopez, who basically did the formulas for the state, and he's gone back and recalculated and brought the district back in several million dollars. So we're very happy to have him, and he knows every detail of that formula.
Okay, great. Ms. Snyder.
Nicole, I want to make sure I understand the compensation piece, if I can, please. We're, we've committed to taking a 3% one-time payment out of fund balance for this year like we did last year. Is that correct?
This would be the first year of the 3%, this current fiscal year.
Okay, so the, we've got an additional 3% that we're strongly considering, I guess would be a way to put it, is that correct?
No, we were, essentially, we talked about utilizing our reserves this year for the one-time adjustment and possibly considering a TRE to make it permanent. And then on top of that, right, so we're, you know, everybody got a 3% increase in the current year, and so, if we maintain that, we would incrementally go up another one and a half on top of it over the two years to keep pace with our surrounding colleagues.
Okay, but you're suggesting another 1.5% above what we?
What we have today.
Okay. One of the things I was struck by was you compared us to the other 11 urban districts and, well, the other urban districts, not the other 11, but, you know, there was, we were at the low end, I think you said, second to last, as I remember from the materials. I should actually find it, I'm going to be talking about it, I guess. But the difference in what our folks were getting compared to the other urban districts and the cost of living, or at least my understanding of the cost of living, with Austin being at the high end versus what, I mean, it just must be a tremendous difference in what our employees are able to do, pay for, afford, versus what other urban districts are able to do for marginally higher cost. I mean, the standard of living just must be pretty different.
Mm-hmm. In some, in some cases, yes.
Yeah, here it is, I think 11.3% behind urban peers.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're doing the 3% plus an additional 1.5 is your recommendation.
As a potential, just starting point, the one and a half, that we probably need to consider if, depending upon what our analysis shows as we evolve through the budget process, just because I believe everyone is going to go up on compensation.
Okay. I certainly agree with that. I mean, I think it's needed just to keep up more than anything else, you know. I'm really looking for a way to do more than just that myself, but I also realize what our constraints are and where we're headed. The big question that I have is just the timing and the ability to do a TRE. And I, I don't like the idea of having to go out to ask for additional money, but, and especially under the circumstances we have under the current system, where, as you pointed out, we're giving 20 something, 24 million or something close to that to the state because of the way the system is set up. But we basically are at the point where we don't have really many additional choices without doing some extremely important things, like closing schools, doing away with planning periods, taking the full-day pre-k. I mean, those are really about the only three really big pots of money that we've got left that we've got any kind of local discretion over. But, you know, I'm still stuck in that place of, you know, the ability to do both a bond and a TRE. And that was why I asked the question that we've asked before, and as Dr. Kostarfen pointed out, we have discussed it multiple times. But it's very difficult for me to see even a community as generous and supportive of public ed as Austin has been, you know, having the ability to go out and pass a bond of the size that we've been talking about, plus do another nine cents, 9.1, whatever the number is, for a TRE. And, you know, it really comes down to where the priorities are and, you know, what's the most important thing to do. And, you know, for me, that's always going to come back to putting things in the classroom. And, you know, if there's something more important than putting a good, highly qualified teacher in the classroom, you know, I don't know what it is, but, you know, I hope as part of our bond and discussion here, that we're really able to have a little bit more in-depth talk about, you know, when and where we want to do things. I get, I agree that, you know, we don't want to do one in May or November, a TRE that is in May or November, simply because it will be counterproductive with what the legislature might do. But I certainly don't want to preclude the possibility of not being able to do one simply because we did the other before. And that's kind of where I see, my fear is, that's kind of where I see us going. And look forward to a further in-depth conversation about that among the board.
Any other questions, trustees? Okay, well, I want to thank you, Ms. Conley. I greatly appreciate all your work on this. I know we're going to be obviously seeing you a number of more times as we move through the budget development. But if anybody has any questions, as always, send them through the superintendent, and we'll try and schedule a primer on funding as soon as possible. Okay, you have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion to second, all those favor, each right hand. Motion passed by everyone on the dais. Okay, thank you, trustees.